Okay, thanks. We're gonna say good evening, everyone, and welcome. This is the July voting meeting for the Exeter Township School District Board of School Directors, and we're joining you live on Zoom. Some folks are participating by Zoom and others, I'm hopeful, are joining us live on YouTube streaming. So this evening, we do have some presentations that we're gonna be making. Sure, there'll be a lot of interest this evening in regard to our opening of schools, and that'll be a topic of not only of our presentation, but also an opportunity for folks who are among the public to comment to the board. And I'll explain that process briefly in a minute. Also, this is our first official board meeting with Dr. Minor at the helm. Dr. Minor is our new superintendent, who has recently joined us as of the beginning of July. And while she's been officially with us since then, we have seen a lot of her prior to that. She's been extremely active in interacting with the board, the community, the staff, the administration, for at least a month or month and a half. So officially, Dr. Minor, I want to welcome you to the July board meeting.
Thank you.
Also, before we get started, I do want to make an announcement that our board had an executive session this past Friday, July 17th, and that was for the purpose of personnel matters. So getting on to public comments, this evening, there may be interest in making comments to the board. We welcome that. We hope this is your opportunity to participate in our board meetings. Sadly, we can't meet face to face, but we have a process for folks to be able to make comments. And I'm gonna turn that over to Mr. Way, our IT supervisor, to maybe talk a little bit about how people can submit comments if they're interested. Joe?
Thank you. This evening, we are listening. We are gathering questions that come into our questions@myexeter.org address. So if you have a question you'd like to submit, please send it to that address. Again, questions@myexeter.org, and we will add it to a list that we're compiling, and we will address it during public comment.
Thank you. I will say that if it gets lengthy, and we're gonna try to limit the section associated with public comments to an hour, if it gets over that or beyond that, or, you know, we feel certainly that there are repetitive questions or comments. We may limit the number of comments that we cover. However, anything that's submitted will be recorded, will be maintained by the school district, will be posted in our meeting minutes, and if necessary, there'll be responses to those, to any questions that may come through. So with that, I think we'll get started, and I'm gonna ask our board secretary, Anne Gaidish, to start us off with the roll call for attendance purposes.
Andrew Aaronz.
Present.
John Fiddler.
Here.
Anne Herring.
Here.
Dave Hamburger.
Here.
Mike Chapina.
Here.
Sharon McLendon.
Here.
Hurry Miller.
Here.
Michelle Stratton. Allison Wilson.
Here.
Eight board members present.
Thanks, Mrs. Gaidish. Okay, we will start off, officially start off our meeting with Dr. Minor and the superintendent's report. Dr. Minor?
Thank you, Dr. Hamburger. First of all, I'd just like to say hello and thank you. It's exciting for me to have this be my very official school board voting meeting, and I am very proud to be representing the district as their superintendent tonight. I would also like to extend sincere thanks to the community, to the teachers, to the staff, to the parents, who have all welcomed me so warmly, as well as to the board members, who have also been very kind in welcoming me to the district. As you know, we have immediately been facing what is, you know, I think, the biggest crisis in education in any of our lifetimes in terms of how do we manage teaching and learning during a pandemic. Tonight, I will be reviewing with the board our health and safety plan. I'll certainly mention this during that presentation, but I would like to just mention it again upfront. I'm incredibly grateful to the administrative team, to the teachers, the nurses, the support staff, the community members, the parents who helped write that plan. You'll see when we present tonight, it was a very long list of participants, and they all were extremely thoughtful and extremely dedicated, so I'm very grateful to them. I also want to mention tonight that we are having a presentation about the formation of the district's Equity Committee. This committee has been led by Mr. Miller and Dr. McLendon for some period of time. I had the opportunity to join it even before I came on as superintendent. They are doing outstanding work on the committee. I'm proud to be a part of it, and I'm excited for their presentation this evening, as well as the formal recognition of that group as an important part of moving our district forward. It's a lengthy agenda tonight, but a lot of important topics. Not typical of a July meeting, but a lot of good things happening. So thank you, Dr. Hamburger.
Thanks, Dr. Minor. We'll move on to item three in our agenda. And this is an Equity and Diversity presentation. I'm gonna turn the floor over to Dr. Sharon McLendon, who's been chairing this committee. So, Dr. McLendon, so yours.
We can't hear you.
Okay, okay. Just forget to take it off of mute. Okay, so last month, I talked to you a little bit about our committee, and I said that I'd come back next, to this meeting, and talk to you about a little bit more. Is it, Joe, on my screen, it's like a, I don't see the whole screen, whole slide?
No, it's blocked.
No?
It's blocked, Dr. McLendon.
I was asking, Joe, why, like, if we can fix that?
Joe's working on it. Josie's working on it.
Okay, so, all right. Anyway, I said I'd come back and talk to you a little bit more about our equity group. And Shandell Wise was gracious enough to co-present with me. I asked Shandell because, first of all, she's a community member, and second of all, Shandell and her husband Earl were the very first people to join the group. We actually were meeting informally the year before last, and we started having regular meetings this past year. So she and her husband were the first ones, and so she's gonna help too with this presentation. What we want to do is give you more information about how we got started with the group, what are we trying to do, and most importantly, we want to talk to you about why the group is so important, why equity is so important. Okay, so I'm gonna start off with, on the first slide, oh, we still got that bar there. So you see, part of the...
I can try and share it. I don't know if it's like a computer issue.
I don't know, Joe. Where's Joe?
Yeah, I'm sharing it. I don't know why it's putting that bar there. That's new. If you want to go ahead and try to share, go ahead.
Okay. I think you have to put me as a co-host for me to share anything.
No, you should be able to share. Yeah, you're powerless. You should be able to share.
All right.
Okay, so anyway, while she's doing that, as Dr. Minor mentioned, we want to give you some information about our group. We also want to become a, be recognized as a formal group by the board. Okay, so on this here slide, you will see, we had a lot of different names when we started. Not a lot. We had a few different names when we started out. We were the Diversity Committee, the Equity and Diversity, Equity and Inclusion. And so we are now, we also, besides becoming a formal committee, we have a formal name, Equity and Excellence at Exeter. And Dr. Minor is the one that came up with that, and other board, other committee members also liked it. So we, that's our official name now, Dr. Minor, and the other board members. Okay, so are you doing that, Shandell?
Yeah. Did you want me to go to the next slide?
Yes, you can go to the next slide. Okay. Okay, so what you see here is PSBA started an equity department. They have an equity department back in 2017. Dr. Heather Miller is the executive director of that, and we are using them as a resource for many of our things. And I wanted to use their equity statement, and I don't usually read slides, but I want to read this one because it's just really sums up what we're trying to do as a group and why equity is so important. So equity is the just and fair distribution of resources based upon each individual student's needs. Equitable resources include funding, programs, policies, initiatives, and supports that target each student's unique background and school context to guarantee that all students have equal access to a high-quality education. And that does come from the Pennsylvania School Board Association. And one of the, a key thing is the individual student's needs, that we are meeting, you know, the needs. It's not just doing the same thing for every student. And Shandell's gonna talk to you a little more about the difference between equity and equality. Okay, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead, Dr. McLendon, sorry.
You wanna say something? Go ahead.
I just didn't want you to forget the call for action from the Pennsylvania Department of Education.
Okay, so, yeah, and on this previous slide, both these organizations, PSBA, they have called action for equity. And this slide here is, I pulled this quote from Pedro Rivera, Pennsylvania Secretary of Education, because I think that might have been back in 2017, too, where they have a big initiative for all the 500 school districts in Pennsylvania, just as same as PSBA does as well. And they have many resources on the websites, both of the PSBA's website plus the Department of Education's website, lots of resources and initiatives and programs. I know that Pedro Rivera has something with high school students, trying to encourage them to go into education. So I just wanted to put this up here so that you are aware, and you can go to these websites and learn many, many things, and some of them are webinars and different things to learn, you know, more about why equity is so important in our school district. And besides the states, this is state initiatives, but it has become a national initiative. And when you go out there to the website, you will see a lot of school districts have information out there about what they're doing, and there's toolkits and a lot of things to, you know, help us to understand and to know what to do in our own districts. Okay.
Okay, in this picture, you see a picture of equality and equity. A lot of people don't realize they are two different things. As Alan Blankenstein says, "Equity means that every child gets what he or she needs to succeed, as opposed to everyone gets the same thing." You know, a lot of times, you know, we want to be fair and make everything equal, but an equal playing field is not equity. So just wanted to point this out to you all this evening. Dr. McLendon?
Okay, so, all right, so this is, we start, I said, we start out really small. It was Dr. Phillips. Actually, he's the one that initiated this. And we had just, we had Shandell, we had Earl, we had Ray Mozo, and Hurry Miller came on as a community member. And that's all we had, and we were like that for a while, and then the committee started to grow. We wanted to make sure that we are including all of the stakeholders. We want community members, we want administrators, teachers, school board, and also, we're going to be adding students. But we didn't add everybody right away because we were, you know, kind of growing the group. We have four school board members, and that's all that we can have so that we don't have a quorum on the meetings. We want to start to get some students also to be on our committee, but we don't have any as of yet. So I hope I didn't miss anybody's name, but that's our committee members at this point. So also, I mentioned Dr. Heather Bennett. She has been extremely helpful. I've had many phone conversations with her. I've attended Leadership Task Force on Equity. Actually, last year, in 2019, October, I had attended a full-day Equity Conference that was given by Dr. Heather Bennett. And I came back to the board at that time, I don't know if you recall, and I wanted us to start writing an equity policy. I was really excited about the things I learned and how important this is for our students, for our school district. And, you know, I mentioned this in a board meeting, I don't know if you recall, and I'm like, we need to write an equity policy. So what I learned by working with Dr. Bennett is you don't just start out writing a policy. You have to do a lot of work, because otherwise, a policy is gonna be words on a piece of paper, and that's not what we want. And we want, like I mentioned before, we want all the stakeholders to be a part of this. And so the equity policy, we still want to do that, but that's gonna be down the road a little bit after we do some other things. But Heather Bennett is, she's been, she's actually attended several of our meetings. She's always available to help. And I have shared some of the resources that she shared with me, with our group. But we were meeting for a while, and then Dr. Phillips brought Chick Lee and Denise Lee and Rita Fredericks on to help us to, you know, to give us some direction. And also Dee Sable, she's the executive director of the Minnesota Diversity Council. She actually presented at one of our meetings. They have, their council has been in existence for 30 years. And they, again, if you go, you can go to their website, a lot of things are available just to anyone who goes there. But she presented at one of our meetings, and she's also a resource to us. So, okay. All right, so when we first started out, like I said, we were trying to figure out, what do we want to do? What are our needs, which direction we want to go? But one of the things that came to our attention, I believe it was Shandell that actually brought this to our attention, that maybe we need to find out, do we, the committee members, have any biases or anything that we need to work on within ourselves? So we, one of the things we did was this implicit bias assessment. And the link is down there. If you haven't ever done any of those, there's, I listed some of them, but there's some others as well. But you can use this, go to this here link and take these. You'll really be, I was surprised at the results because I like to pride myself that I have no biases. But there's these things that are implicit or unconscious biases, where we don't even realize it. And when I did some of these tests, it made me want to understand why I might have that bias, or what can I do about it. And so the members did that, and then we had a meeting where Denise Lee, who was a diversity trainer, she came on and did one of our meetings and talked to us about, like, well, okay, now you know that you have these biases, what do you do about it? Because you can't just say, I'm not gonna have any biases. It doesn't work like that. So that was one of the things that we did to help us, because we felt that we're leaders, we're leading this group, and we need to make sure, you know, that we have an understanding of our own feelings. And then the other thing that we did that was very important was the PSBA Equity System Continuum Audit. And all of the members completed the survey, had Dr. Bennett analyze it and put it together into a report for us. From that report is where we looked at, we identified our goals. And we just listed all of our goals, and then we worked on what were the top six, excuse me, six goals that we want to work on initially. But those goals that you're gonna see later, Shandell's gonna talk to you about those, they came from this Equity System Audit. And what we're doing with the goals is working, we're gonna, we're breaking out into subgroups to look at the goals, to get more research, more data, and to develop an action plan for each one of these goals. Okay?
Okay, so we want to know, where does our district or school entity exist on the continuum? Our goal is that everything we do as a district will be looked at through an equity lens. We want to do this by conducting an equity audit so that we know how Exeter is as a district. The goal is to move Exeter School District through the continuum to have equity as the foundation. That is the end goal.
And I just want to say about the equity audit is going, we are looking at, I think, Dr. Minor, you're heading up that goal. And the equity audit is going to be given out, it's a survey, a questionnaire and survey that is given out to all teachers, administrators, you know, we give that out to everybody, and it takes a look at the whole, with the whole district, how the whole district perceives what we're doing, and we're looking for gaps. The one that we did, the committee did, just was the committee, but this is gonna be district-wide when we do that.
Okay, and some of the priority goals that this committee has is to, obviously, again, conduct a district-wide equity audit to see where we fall, where we stand. Also, to have an endeavor to recruit and hire diverse candidates, not just on low-level positions, but all positions within the district. To also disaggregate data and develop a plan to address opportunity gaps in education. And also to continuously review current curriculums. I know Dr. McLendon is on like a subgroup within the school board to review curriculum. And I'm gonna give you an example of this. There is an English class within Exeter School District, and there was a unit on Frederick Douglass. And the teacher had asked a question regarding prior knowledge. She was seeking prior knowledge, but the question that she asked was, how would you feel being enslaved? And this question was not very sensitive to the people of color whose families may have experienced slavery. And, you know, it's just something to look at within our district. Also, to provide ongoing educational programs for students, staff, administrators in our community, engage diverse communities in all aspects of the school, and of course, to support the board in the adoption of an equity policy. And then that's it. Did you have anything else to add, Dr. McLendon?
Well, I just want to say, like, I know that last year, the teachers, they were, I actually attended, and I know Dr. Hamburger, you were there at the opening session with the teachers, and it was, they had a presenter on diversity, and they had a number of professional developments for teachers throughout the year. And so we want to continue with those, but also, we want to know, you know, we want to see, like, when you are doing these programs or trainings, what is different because of that? Like, you know, does a teacher teach differently then, you know, once you've had that? Because you could have maybe a 10-hour diversity training, and then that's where that stays. So we want it to really impact our students, whatever programs and trainings that our staff does. And Shandell's on the, Shandell is on the community committee, because, I mean, a subcommittee, because we really want to get our community involved. Before the pandemic, we actually had some plans. One of the things we were gonna do was go to May Day, have a table set up. So we, she's gonna be working along with some others on how we can get our community engaged. Okay?
Dr. McLendon, I have a question. Will your meetings be open to the public? If, you know, when you do meet, will there be sort of a notice to the public and folks will be able to come to?
Well, we, yeah, we had, we didn't do that yet, just because we were kind of fumbling around, trying to figure out, you know, what we want to do, growing the group. But I'm certainly open to having the community attend. We're doing it by Zoom, so you mean, like, have, like we're doing now for the board meeting, they would be?
Yeah, I mean, presumably, if it's Zoom, then it would have to be something like this. But I mean, going down the line, and my, my understanding is that, you know, this is a, this is a committee that will meet over, you know, a lengthy period of time indefinitely. So there will be a point of time when you'll be meeting in person, I'm sure, and I just wanted to get a sense of it.
I'm perfectly fine with that. I, you know, I welcome that, because we do want community involved. And so, yes, that's, that's fine. We just didn't do it yet, like I said, because we're working a lot of the kinks and, you know, those kinds of things. But yeah, sure, I mean, we meet on a Monday's, the first Monday of the month, from 6:30 to 8:30. So community and, you know, others are always welcome.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, this is Hurry, so I think one of the things we will definitely do is we'll probably even try to invite some people to come in and maybe do some training for not only some of the teachers, but also the community, make sure that they're involved in this whole process of doing, and learning some things about equity, learning about diversity, and, you know, and make sure that everybody's kind of involved in this whole committee. It's not gonna be something that we're gonna have, you know, closed out to everybody. It's gonna be something that's open. Would you agree, Dr. McLendon?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. Like I said, we just didn't do it because we were kind of figuring out what we want to do, how we're gonna do it, and it was only a few people for, like, a while. We only had a couple of people attending the meetings. And so I think we are ready to, you know, invite other people, and then we encourage that as well.
Yep, absolutely.
And I heard, here, I was just getting ready to say, you know, if you have anything you want to add or any, I, there's, we have, several of our members are actually a part of the school, you know, the school board meeting tonight. So anybody that has anything to add or, you know, offer, just please feel free.
Yeah, so the one thing I will say is that, you know, our community is becoming a lot more and more diverse, and I think we need to learn how to embrace what the community has to offer, you know, to help the whole community. I mean, so this is a very important and integral part of growth within our community and our school district. We're kind of somewhat of the pioneers in this whole thing, but I think that's a good thing. Don't be surprised if you see other school districts probably mimic some of what we're doing, but I think it's definitely necessary. And we have the, you know, the, definitely the bandwidth to be able to handle this and do a lot more things to make sure that, that all of our kids are feeling like they're comfortable in their own skin, and on every aspect. And I think we definitely need to make sure even our curriculum and everything fits to where kids feel like they are part of this community, and there's no areas where they feel like they're not accepted, and that's our main goal.
Dr. McLendon, I'd also add that as superintendent, I feel very privileged and excited that this group has already been formed, that you found such outstanding consultants and, you know, such a nice spectrum of our community members to be a part of it. I think it's going to be incredibly helpful as we move the district forward along this path, that this has already been established, has taken root, and I'm really looking forward to see the work that gets done through this committee and with its guidance and leadership for the district as a whole.
Right, and we were, we really were one of the school districts that was on the forefront of this before all of the things that, you know, are going on now in our, you know, society, the movements. And we actually had, you know, were working on this and saw a need for it. But I noticed when I was in one of the trainings with Dr. Bennett, there were a number of representatives from other school districts who were just trying to get this started. So, yeah, we are kind of, you know, way ahead of it. So this next slide, I talked to our group about it, but I also want the board to be aware of, there are a number of trainings and educational programs that are offered by PSBA. We, as school board members, utilize PSBA's resources quite a bit. And so I just wanted to list those up there, that some of these, Heather Bennett is one of the main ones that teaches, but she does have a, presents, rather, she does have a team, and they are willing to, you know, do these trainings for us that we could get the board, if the board is interested in any of them, and also our committee, and she could do both. She could do the board and the committee at the same, you know, with the same training. There are, like I mentioned before, on the website, I believe a lot of those things, you might have to be a member of, which all the school board directors are members and superintendent, and I'm not sure who else are members of that. But when you're a member, you can access so many of these things, but there's also a lot of resources that are just out there available. But there, up there, you see the list, and if you, if the board thinks that you're interested in having any of these, then let me know. We can get, you know, we can get that set up. It can be one hour, it could be two hours, and I realize that there's a lot going on, a lot of meetings, a lot of things that school board members are doing, but this is really important. And our committee is going to be doing a lot of work, but we, we need to be doing it with the school board, because if we want to adopt a policy, that's the school board that's going to adopt that. So we really are encouraging school board members, we have four, but we're encouraging the other school board members to also, you know, to learn some things and come along with us with this. Okay?
Okay, and we just want to leave you with this quote. You know, our name is Equity and Excellence, and we just felt that this was appropriate to end this way. "To push for excellence today without continuing to push for access for less privileged students is to undermine the crucial but incomplete gains that have been made. Equity and excellence cannot be divided." And our hope is that, you know, we do have equity and excellence within Exeter School District. This quote is by Ernest L. Boyer. He's an American educator. Thank you so much for listening to our presentation today. Any questions?
I would just like to... I would just like to thank you for the presentation, Ms. Wise, and I really appreciate you as a community member stepping forward to support us. You know, by, by presenting this this evening. Thank you.
Thanks so much for having me.
Thank you, Shandell. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Shandell. And, and Dr. Minor actually joined our group, you've been maybe three months ago. So she joined the group long before she actually came on officially as superintendent. So, no, any questions? So I have a question. So, um, Dr. Hamburg, you asked about the public, if the public, you know, if community could attend. So we can only have four board members there, but could you have other board members in attendance that aren't participating in the meeting? Would that be okay?
I mean, it's like, from my perspective, Dr. McLendon, it's kind of like a committee meeting that we have, you know, the board, you know, we invite the public. So anybody in the public can participate. And we invite board members to be part of that, but the official representation on the committee would be limited, I think, probably to four, to honor the, the whole concept of limiting a board representation to, to less than a quorum. That's probably just the safest way to conduct these kind of meetings. But yeah, I'm sure this is, these are topics of interest to all board members. And, you know, there'll be minutes taken. There may even be recordings of your, your meetings too. So if they can't participate, you know, and be there in person, we can certainly, you know, watch afterwards. And, you know, I would, I would just reiterate what you've said about PSBA and, and other sources of information that have to do with anti-racism education, you know, for not only our board, for, for members of the public. And, you know, I think there are so many great resources out there, you know, right now, that are, that are real valuable and helping. Most of us are, are in need of, of really trying to understand this better, what's happening in our society today. And all of us are on sort of a continuum of, of understanding and development in this continuum. And as long as you have a desire to learn and grow and become part of, I think, what we consider to be inherent to the resolution that we're going to pass later on today, which is really kind of supporting all aspects of anti-racism. I mean, I think there are just so many ways that we can continue to grow as a, as a school community. And that means not only board members, but the staff and students and, and the public. So, well, thank you for introducing this, us this evening. And so I know it's a brief introduction. There's a lot more here. And I, I would say that, you know, as our board meetings continue, I would suggest that, you know, you, you feel free to, to provide reports to the board, you know, periodically at, at our board meetings to be able to let us know what's happening, you know, with the committee.
And Shandell and I would be happy to do that. Right, Shandell?
We will, we will.
I want to give some credit to Mr. Isselman because he volunteered. I asked, would someone do the minutes? And he volunteered to do it. So we do have minutes from some of our meetings. And he's really good at it too. Like he types them up and has them all up. And like by the time we finish the meeting, he's emailing these wonderful minutes to us. So we do have, you know, we have minutes of what, what has been happening with, with our meetings that we didn't in the beginning, but we do now. And I just want everybody to keep in mind, like, you know, we, what we're doing is for everyone, but really what we're doing is for our students. They're at the center of this. And it's not listed up there as a goal, because those were the priority goals we came up with, but we also listed a couple of other things that we want to do. And one of those is, and, and I, I don't know if you know, you're on that committee, to get student voice. So we want to work on, we want students on our committee, but we also want to do some things that we're hearing, because I, I know that students want to talk about what's going on. And another thing that we did not mention, but it's listed not on that goal slide, but we also are going to start posting things on the district's website. So Yuri is the chair of our technology, and so he agreed to be the lead on that. And we're going to post things, like we'll post the, well, I'm not sure if that was going to get posted just on another location, but we want to post the anti-racism resolution. We can post, you know, other things there too as well. So we're looking to really, I'm so, what I'm so excited about is that we were just kind of creeping along, crawling along. And then the more members that we got, and we've got these consultants and people, and then this, the committee is really taking off. And I'm so excited about, you know, what we're, what we're going to be doing. We're a little bit limited. Like I said, we were planning some things to do out in the community. You know, but, but because of, you know, the pandemic, you know, we were, we're limited. But I, just like you got creative with teaching, we're going to get creative with what we can do with our, our group too. And I'm just thankful that all the people who are doing, joining, they're passionate about what we're doing, and everybody's working really hard. Okay. So thank you.
Thank, thank you guys very much for that presentation.
Thank you.
So we have another presentation this evening. And it's Dr., Dr. Minor will be presenting on on opening a health and safety plan for opening schools. Dr. Minor.
Thank you, Dr. Hamburger. Looks like we're trying to get the PowerPoint up and going. So pause for a second while I get that up on the screen. While, while the tech department's working on getting that up on the screen, I'll just say a few words about the presentation this evening. As I'm sure many of you are aware, the school district has to submit a phased reopening plan to the Pennsylvania Department of Education. Like so many, there are assurances that have to be given to them. And I think we're maybe having the same experience that we had with the previous presentation with the portion of the screen blocked off. So Joe, are we able to correct that?
I don't know. Not sure what the issue is here.
Joe, wait, I think you also have the presentation. If Mr. Calmed can't get it up and running, is it possible that you could share it at your screen?
Yes, absolutely.
As I was saying, there's always, you know, many assurances with the Department of Education. And so this plan allows for the district to make assurances that we will abide by directives and guidance from the Department of Education, from the Department of Health, and from the governor's office. The plan requires board approval and then ultimately submission to the Department of Education in order to open any kind of educational programming in the school. And then a summary of it has to be posted on our website. Any luck with the presentation?
I will be there in just a moment. So.
I don't want to get too far ahead of my slide.
Do you have a show or do you need me to?
Let me just try one more thing.
Okay, I'm ready to go if you're not.
All right.
There we go. Thank you.
Did that do it?
That did it. All right. We can go ahead to the next slide, please. As I mentioned, the Department of Education, all school districts are required to submit a phased school reopening health and safety plan. The plan has to incorporate enough flexibility to adapt to changing conditions. The plans must be approved by the school board prior to August 3rd. Each plan must be posted on the district's publicly available website prior to reopening school. And each plan has to be monitored throughout the year and updated as needed, which of course we will be doing. Next slide, please. In order to develop the plan, we first established a pandemic planning task force. As superintendent, I am serving as the pandemic coordinator, but I'm very pleased to have this task force supporting me and all of the efforts of the district in regards to how we're responding as a school to the pandemic. As you can see, we have a broad cross-section of our school stakeholders, building administrators, teachers, school board members, food services, and we were privileged to have Dr. Raymond Hubbard from Reading Pediatrics be a consultant as well on the plan. Next slide, please. All right. On this slide, this is our subcommittee committee. So as you can see, between the members of the task force and the subcommittee structure, we were able to engage even more stakeholders, both internal to the school district as employees and external as parents and community members. Each of the six areas represents a portion of the plan. You can see each was assigned a lead. And then members were initially selected from people from the task force, and then people from the task force were asked to suggest other people in the community, parents, et cetera, who may be of, of value in terms of bringing their thoughts to this process. So as you can see, a large number of people gave their input. And again, I want to extend my sincere thanks to everyone who participated in the development of the plan. Next slide, please. One of the things that we recognize is critically important is communication. And so we are looking to push out information to our community about what's happening and what we're doing, but also to solicit communication back from our community and our staff in terms of their thinking, their thoughts, their concerns, their questions, so that as we continue to develop our plans, we're doing that in response to feedback from all of those stakeholders. Recently, I put out an update video talking about our pandemic plans, and that video to date has over 4,000 views. We sent out a staff survey that has garnered 355 responses and a parent survey that as of this morning had 1,823 parent responses. You can see that from that survey, 70.9% of parents indicated that if schools were open for in-person instruction, it was their intention to send the children, their children to school. And 16.9% would prefer to send students to an Exeter virtual school if one was available, which it will be. The remaining parents were either uncertain or had private school or other types of plans. The vast majority were uncertain at the time of the survey. Next slide, please. There were a lot of common themes. There were over 900 individual open-ended responses. And to kind of, we tried to group those open-ended responses into broad categories. There were many people who were urging us to reopen fully. There are many people who are urging us to consider a virtual or hybrid option. There were a number of people who expressed concerns over safety and had very specific questions regarding safety protocols. There were a number of people who had wanted to express that they were anxious or their children were anxious about the potential of either virtual school or in-person school. Both were anxiety inducing to different people. And then there was a certain number that were just thanks, appreciating that we were soliciting feedback, appreciating the hard work that went into it, appreciating our teachers, our support staff, our administrators, who all work so hard to bring school to us in pandemic, non-pandemic times. Next slide, please. The biggest, I think, back and forth in all of the comments were parents who felt strongly that masks should be worn by everyone at all times, and parents who felt strongly that masks, masks should never be worn or worn, you know, infrequently. And that issue was settled for us prior to us coming forth with our plan by the Pennsylvania Department of Health that made it clear that everyone would wear a mask unless they were able to sustain more than six feet of distance from another person, or they had a specific ADA exemption. And so although we did receive a lot of comments on that, it's no longer something that the district can take any action on other than following the Department of Health directives. Next slide, please. Some of the other comments that were just miscellaneous, you know, people talked about, you know, appreciating the district's dedication. Some people said, you know, that they hoped it would be online school. It's been a difficult year. You know, and then a lot of people said things like, you know, above all, I just want my kids to be safe, whatever that means. And certainly as a parent myself, you know, I, I certainly understand that and feel that for parents and children. Next slide, please. Thank you. And as part of the planning process, we had four types of reopen that we were able to select from. I've color-coded them. Option one was the option that was most in line with a green phase, which is what Berks County is in right now. And that's a total reopen with a virtual option for families or students who are distance learning because of safety or health concerns. And we'll be talking about more about why we selected that one in just a moment. Option two was a scaffolded reopening. That's more of a yellow phase option for most people. And that's where some students are engaged in in-person learning, while others are distance learning. So some grade levels are in person, while other grade levels are remote. Option three was a blended reopening, again, more of a yellow phase opportunity. That balances in-person learning and remote learning for all students. So for instance, some students will come on Mondays and Wednesdays, and other students will come on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And then the final option was a red phase option primarily, which is total remote learning. And if a school selected that, a big portion of their plan had to be explaining how they were going to open for in-person instruction and when. Next slide, please. So I'm going to go through the ones that we didn't select first and, and talk a little bit about why we didn't select those. So as I mentioned, option four, total remote learning was designed for districts who are in the red phase, and it focuses ultimately on reopening in the green or yellow phase. So that's not applicable to us at this point in time, as Berks County is currently still in the green phase. Next slide, please. Option three was a blended reopening. Some of our neighboring school districts entertained this, and I got a lot of questions about it as superintendent. Some people are referring to it as a, a hybrid opportunity. Again, it would be where some students came on Monday and Wednesday. Other students came on Tuesday and Thursday, and nobody came on Friday, and it was a virtual experience. What, this wasn't selected either. So why did we not choose this one? Well, first of all, the safety benefits for this type of reopening rely largely on the assumption that when students aren't in school, they are isolating on those off days. While students are in school, we are able to control a lot of the environment in terms of what the seating looks like, whether or not students are wearing masks, what spacing looks like, et cetera. When students are home by themselves, we have no control over what they do. And so, you know, in, in conversations with, you know, fellow superintendents around the county, the idea that, you know, on those off days, students could be gathering in homes, not wearing masks, not social distancing without parent supervision because parents were at work and potentially actually increasing the viral load in our community as a result. Another reason, and we heard this from a number of parents in the survey, was that childcare will be extremely difficult, if not impossible, if parents had to seek out childcare on only two days a week or three days a week versus a more typical childcare schedule that would either be a full-time childcare or an after-before care scenario. And then finally, if our own staff was in that position where they needed childcare, we may find ourselves with a very limited staff pool. And we would have to consolidate classrooms, which would ultimately eliminate the potential benefit of reduced student numbers in classrooms if we were functionally short-staffed. So those are the primary reasons that we determined that this wouldn't be a beneficial option for Exeter. Next slide, please. Option two is a scaffolded reopening. This, I believe, is what was proposed in Boyertown. This option would have allowed some students to come in certain grade levels and other students not to come. This option would have limited benefit in Exeter. Presumably in this model, you would bring in young students while older students would stay home. Again, we would have those viral load concerns in the community, what were students doing outside of school, and then potentially break giving to their siblings in terms of infection that would ultimately come to school as younger siblings. And unless we then move the younger students into the vacated buildings that were designated for older students and designed for older students, there wouldn't be a benefit in terms of distancing. And our buildings are, you know, from, from toilets to desks and chairs, not designed at the high school or junior high level to support elementary students. So that didn't seem to be an option that had a particular benefit to Exeter. Next slide, please. So the final option and the option that the majority of the districts in Berks County have selected, as well as Exeter, is option one, which is a total reopen with a virtual option. This option provides maximum flexibility to our families. Families who wish to have their students attend in person may do so five days a week, and those who feel unsafe or unable to return will have a full Exeter Township School District virtual option. Later on this evening, we will be asking the board to approve a memorandum of understanding with our Teachers Association, ETEA. I'm pleased to say that we've had wonderful discussions with them, and we'll be partnering with them so that our virtual option will be primarily composed of Exeter teachers delivering Exeter curriculum, making it far superior to what a number of our neighboring districts are able to provide, as well as certainly far superior to a districts are able to provide, as well as certainly far superior to a cyber charter option. Next slide, please. In terms of the contents of the plan itself, I'm not going to be going through every item of the plan. The plan is available now as an attachment to the board agenda this evening. It will also, as I mentioned, be posted on our website following approval of the plan. But just to give you an overview, as I mentioned previously, the plan has six primary areas. The first one involves cleaning and disinfecting buildings, ensuring buildings, supplies, buses are cleaned and disinfected. So anything that was shared between students in terms of any classroom items, disinfected. And Ms. Guidish led up that committee as she heads up our facility staff, who typically do that work, and has already been acquiring large amounts of cleaner, disinfectant, those sorts of things that will be required to keep our schools clean and disinfected. The next group was social distancing. How do we organize spaces to promote social distance? How do we create protocols and procedures around distancing practices? The third portion of the plan is monitoring. How do we develop protocols for monitoring student and staff wellness? And how do we create procedures and protocols around quarantine and safe return? The next portion of the plan is other considerations. This deals specifically with policies, procedures, and protocols that will be needed to implement the plan. This talks about students who may be at increased, or staff who may be at increased risk due to physical impairments or disabilities, high-risk health categories, those sorts of things that may need special plans outside of the broad plan, as well as ensuring staff are deployed effectively, and considering mental health and social emotional well-being, both for staff and students in the community during this time. Communication. How do we have timely and effective communication with family and staff? What does ongoing communication look like with the state and local authorities? And then finally, professional development. How do we ensure that all stakeholders are prepared with the knowledge and the skills necessary to implement the plan? Next slide, please. So what does the future hold? I have no idea. You know, this is something that, you know, on March 12th, if you had told me that I would be sitting here on July 21st talking about pandemic planning still, I wouldn't have believed you. And so I think we've all learned that this has been unpredictable. Changes have come quickly. Information has come quickly. And so, you know, as superintendents, as school leaders, we've all learned that we have to be flexible but planful. So as we stand today, you know, we are technically in the green phase, but we are bordering on yellow in terms of the data and statistics that are in Berks County. So while we're in the green phase, it's our intention to move forward with the plan as presented if approved this evening. If conditions deteriorate this evening, the board will be asked to approve an emergency resolution that would allow the superintendent to close schools if conditions in our community deteriorate and it no longer would seem to be safe within reason to have students report for in-person instruction. And that would be if the state hadn't made that decision on their own, that we could do it unilaterally. And then finally, if the state determines that schools are ordered to shut down, then, you know, we'll plan accordingly. I think that this is a very real possibility, that schools will be shut down by the Department of Health or by the governor. For those of you who listened to the governor's address last Thursday, he made it clear that cases were pouring in into Western Pennsylvania, into Pittsburgh, over the Ohio border, and pouring into southeastern Pennsylvania, up through the I-95 corridor, through Florida, the Carolinas, Georgia. And he expressed that, you know, that bars were going to be closed, that, could you go back to that slide, please? Thank you. That bars were going to be closed, that restaurants were going to be at 25% capacity, and that masks were required, as well as, you know, additional guidance around keeping, you know, the public safe and this disease at bay. And he specifically called out that if, over the course of the next several weeks, Pennsylvania's numbers did not improve, that the consequence would be closing of schools. So we are preparing for that possibility as well. Both that schools will never open in August in the first place due to a government-ordered shutdown, or that at some later point, schools will be closed if there's a resurgence, for instance, during the flu season. So we'll be prepared for that if it would happen. All right, last slide, please. I think that, you know, the most important thing that we can do right now is to come together as a community. One of the things in the course of my entry plan, as Dr. Hamburger mentioned, I spent many, many weeks speaking to stakeholders, former administrators, parents, business owners, teachers, support staff members, board members, and to the person, when I asked, you know, what is the greatest strength of Exeter, people said, "It's our community." Our community is amazing. You know, of course, they said, "Our teachers are amazing," but really, what really was outstanding to me was how many people referenced the strength of the Exeter community. And, you know, as superintendent, I really hope that we see this as an opportunity to stay Exeter strong, to come together, to not let, you know, political divisiveness or other topics divide us. You know, this little graphic is, you know, rowing in different directions that ultimately has no beneficial effect. And so, you know, from what I have seen so far, I believe that Exeter is exactly the kind of community that can do that, that can stay strong, that can stay unified, kind of community that believes in our schools, that supports our schools, that care about our children, and wants truly the best for them. And I think the best way that we can get to that point is to stay together as a community. We're not going to agree on every point, certainly. That's healthy. That's encouraged. We need dialogue, but respectful dialogue, and dialogue that's intended to move us forward, not divide us and have us not be able to make the progress we need to educate our students safely. So that concludes my presentation about the plan. Are there questions from the board?
I have, I guess, a question and a comment, Kim. I spoke with some students over the weekend, and they were very saddened and dejected and disappointed to learn that this whole process went on with, apparently, without any input from students. And I'm just wondering why.
Well, initially, the task force, you know, was assembled at, you know, at a high level, but I think the student portion and the student input is extremely important, and I'm glad that you brought that up. One of the things that I didn't mention in the slides, but that we're moving forward with, are several additional subgroups, inclusive of special education parents subgroup, virtual learning for parents subgroup, students subgroup. I'm sure there's a number that I am not thinking of right now. So our initial priority was to get a plan that was PDE compliant moving forward, and as we develop the details of those plans, get in the weeds, so to speak, we'll be looking to expand all of those subgroups to get input, and certainly, students would be a valuable contributor to that. That being said, I did hear from some students, some graduates, who talked about their experience with virtual learning in college, those sorts of things. And so I really do appreciate those who reached out and did provide their feedback. They found a way to do it, but we will have a formal students subgroup.
Oh, great, thank you. I'll be able to get back to them and let them know that. Thanks.
Absolutely, thank you.
So not that they technically had a choice as to whether or not to go back into the classroom. Where do our teachers stand on this issue? Have we surveyed them?
Yes, so we did a staff survey. The questions dealt, to some extent, about their ability to come back in terms of whether or not they had medical conditions that would require accommodations or leaves. And then they also had an open-ended question. As I mentioned, we had over 300 responses to that. A number of their questions pertain to the specifics of what virtual looked like, the specifics of what cleaning protocols, those sorts of things. I've been in regular communication with ETEA leadership, and both the president and vice president served on our task force and support the plan that we're putting forward this evening.
Thank you.
Dr. Minor, my assumption is that the plan that we're sending in the PDEs, you know, the questions and the content is pretty well prescribed by the department. And there are lots of other details that are not included in the plan that obviously have to be fleshed out. If a person is interested in really kind of following this and kind of seeing where we're going with it, and really learning more about the specifics of, you know, wearing masks and monitoring your child's, you know, temperature and riding on the school bus and all those sorts of things, what sort of resources are going to be available for them as we're going forward? What could people expect to see, and how can they access that information?
Well, that's an excellent point. And again, I want to, you know, go back to what I said to Mr. Fidler. You know, at this point, we had a very short turnaround time. I know that you're all aware that I started on July 1st, and so to get this plan written and submitted and hopefully approved by the board so that we could open schools on August 3rd was the initial priority in terms of the broad overall plan. But a lot of things have been working in parallel to that. So for instance, planning for virtual instruction has really been going on continuously since the spring, as the potential for that may arise. We are now fully committed, along with our Teachers Association, to the virtual option and prepared for any event of a full shutdown to go full virtual. So in terms of that plan in particular, a plan which I know a lot of people have a lot of questions about, they specifically want to know, how is it going to be different than the spring? How is it going to be superior to a cyber charter option? How is it going to work? Teachers are interested in that information as well. We will be presenting that at the Education Committee of the Board on August 4th. That meeting will be devoted to that particular topic, what will virtual look like, real clarity around that plan, what will that look like if it's optional, what will it look like if there's a shutdown and it's for all students? So the details of that will be fleshed out there. As far as other specific questions, there are a lot of details in the plan regarding mask-wearing, regarding temperature-taking, those sorts of things. If parents or community members, students, teachers, anyone who really has a genuine interest in the well-being of Exeter, our educational process, and student learning in the health and safety of the community, you're welcome to reach out to me directly. My email is k-i-m-i-n-o-r@myexeter.org. You can find me on the website on the superintendent's page. Let me know if you would like to serve on one of those subgroups, or if not, what your specific questions or concerns are, and I can direct you to the appropriate member of our task force or answer them directly. So we'll continue to have formal communication, not on our website, they'll come out on our Facebook page. You know, we will, you know, send them through parent link, those are the formal opportunities for kind of one-way communication, but we really value and want to continue to have two-way communication. If you're interested, please reach out, let me know. There's bound to be a subcommittee that fits your particular interest, and we would welcome you joining us as we work through the details of the process.
So...
I have a question. Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, just, you know, I've sort of been immersed in COVID since it started through the hospital. And, you know, one of the questions that I have, or one of the experiences I had, has to do around enforcement. You know, we can put a policy on paper, but as the famous philosopher Mike Tyson once said, that everybody has a plan until they get punched in the face. And, you know, in order for this to work, 100% of the people have to follow 100% of the plan 100% of the time. And I'm just wondering, you know, that whole enforcement component is going to be a challenge. Do you feel that way? And what are your thoughts on that?
Well, I think it's a fair question, Mr. Fidler, but the reality of schools is that we enforce things all the time, right? That's what schools do. We say that you have to come on time. We say that you can't be late for class. We say that you have to dress appropriately. We say that you have to do your homework. You know, we say that you have to change for gym class. You know, schools, to a large extent, are about compliant behavior. And, you know, we talk about classroom management. We talk about administrative consequences. So if there's one area where schools do have some expertise, it's certainly not infectious disease mitigation, but it is how do you get students and staff, for that matter, to comply with the rules and regulations? And as school systems, we have, you know, tons of rules and regulations. We have rules and regulations that govern special education. We have rules and regulations that govern certification. So I would say of all institutions, in terms of having a great familiarity with how to enforce compliance, we're probably best prepared for that. Is it going to be a challenge? Yes. Do we need parents to be partners and not adversaries? Yes. But do I believe that our administrative staff, our teachers, and our community as a whole want the schools to be successful and will support us? I absolutely do. There's always going to be somebody who tries to punch you in the nose, as the great philosopher Mike Tyson said, but you have to stand right back up and, you know, finish the round. And I think we are more than capable of doing that.
Thank you.
I have a question that I've not, I've done the research, but I can't find anything on it, and it runs a little bit off course of the health and safety plan, per se, but I don't know if I'll have another opportunity to ask it. What is the district's, or any school district's liability if a student, or staff member, or administrator, or anybody in the district comes down with the coronavirus disease? Are we liable in any way?
Well, I'm going to throw that to our council, Mr. Ellis.
Well, I generally don't like to give legal advice publicly, but I'll do so in this instance. It's our view that, generally speaking, there should not be any liability, to the extent that the school complies with the directives from the Department of Education, Department of Health, Governor's Office, CDC, et cetera. And somebody does come down with the illness, our view is that there shouldn't be any liability that should arise as a result of that scenario. There are certain very, very limited circumstances where extreme misconduct, as in all cases, could result in litigation. But if there's a good-faith effort to comply and substantial compliance, I'm comfortable that you should be okay.
However, Ellis, that doesn't mean that you wouldn't be sued. It just means that you're not...
Successfully sued.
Right.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, there's going to be litigation. There's litigation occurring all over the country already, mainly in the employment area, but I suspect we're going to see some litigation flowing out of the opening of schools as well. But I feel comfortable that you won't be able to be successfully sued.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Dr. Minor at this time?
Thank you for the presentation.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, folks. We will move on in our agenda, and this is our opportunity to hear public comment. We're going to need some help here from Mr. Joe Way, our IT supervisor. I'm going to ask Joe to go into the queue of those who have submitted comments. This is going to be a little bit like the comment section or portion that we have during our board meetings. We try to limit it to three minutes, you know, and one person has an opportunity to speak generally on a topic, and we'll move through, you know, the questions or comments as we go. We may or may not be answering questions, depends on the complexity and, you know, how involved, you know, some of these questions, if there are questions, you know, maybe. And we're going to try to, it's about 10 after 8:00. We're going to try to limit this to about 9:00, 10:00, and no later than that. And anything beyond that, we'll make efforts to make sure that all the comments are posted on our, in our minutes. So with that, Mr. Way, do you want to start us off with the first comment? It would be good to know who the person is who made the comment, and if they provided their address, you know, so we would know if they live in the district or not.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Question one comes from Chandel Wise at 33 Hayden Circle, and it's multi-part. If a teacher tests positive for COVID-19, are they required to quarantine for two to three weeks? Is their sick leave covered, paid? If a teacher has five classes a day with 30 students each, do all 150 of those students need to stay home and quarantine for 14 days? Do all 150 of those students now have to be tested? Who pays for those tests? Are they happening at school? How are the parents being notified? Does everyone in each of those kids' families need to get tested? Who pays for that? What if someone who lives in the same house as a teacher tests positive? Does that teacher now need to take 14 days off of work to quarantine? Is that time off covered? Is that time off covered, paid? Where is the district going to find substitute teachers who will work in a classroom full of exposed, possibly infected students for substitute pay? Substitutes teach in multiple schools. What if they are diagnosed with COVID-19? Do all of the kids in each school now have to quarantine and get tested? Who's going to pay for that? What if a student in your kid's class tests positive? What if your kid tests positive? Does every other student and teacher they have been around have to quarantine? Do all get notified? Do we all get notified who's infected and when? Or because of HIPAA regulations, are parents and teachers just going to get mysterious may-have-been-in-contact emails all year long? What is the stress level going to be due to our teachers? How does it affect the health and well-being? How does it affect their ability to teach? How does it affect their ability, the quality of education they're able to provide? What is this going to do to our kids? What are the lifelong-term effects of consistently being stressed out? How would it affect students and faculty when the first teacher in their school dies from this? The first parent of a student who brought it home, the first kid? Thanks for your questions, Chandel Wise.
And I'm not, and I'm certainly not in a position to answer those questions, but Dr. Minor, I wondered if there was, I mean, there was an awful lot of questions there and obviously time does not permit to answer every one of those questions. Was there anything that really kind of came out in your mind in terms of, you know, hearing all those and what was your, what would your thought be?
Absolutely. So all of the questions that pertain to quarantine, who would be responsible for quarantining, how that notification process would happen, there were many that were related to that topic. That would actually be determined by the Department of Health, not by the school district. So when anyone tests positive, that's reported to the Department of Health immediately as a result of a positive test. That goes all the way up through the chain of the Department of Health and then back down in the school system and the school's given specific directives in terms of who needs to quarantine for how long, what notifications need to be sent out, et cetera. So in all of those scenarios that were referenced, the school district, as we do with any infectious disease, whether it be chickenpox or whooping cough, we rely on the Department of Health to tell us what to do, when to do it and how to do it. And that's exactly what we do in this circumstance as is stated in our plan. In terms of leaves and the ability of teachers to take leaves, that, you know, has been considered in the CARES Act in terms of people needing to quarantine and being able to take paid leave around that time. We also, of course, have sick leave, other types of leave. Our Human Resources Department would obviously work with any teacher who was in that circumstance to make sure that all of the leaves available to them were in fact made available to them. As far as, you know, what's the social emotional impact of teachers being in this environment as well as, you know, if in the event that someone would pass away in this environment, I would say that we don't know. We haven't lived in this environment before. We haven't seen what the social emotional impact is. We can predict that people will need social emotional support and we have predicted that. We've considered that on our committee. We have a subcommittee that is specifically planning for social emotional well-being, both for staff and for students, you know, in the horrible situation that we all shudder to even consider that someone would pass away. You know, we would do the same thing, we would consult experts on how to best support our students, our staff and our community around that as we do anytime we have a tragic loss in our school community.
Thanks, Dr. Minor. Mr. Way, could we move on to the next comment?
Yes. Question two is from Alexis Evans, 250 Aldridge Court. Will the proposed plan for the 2021 school year include information about virtual learning for students with an IEP who require additional academic support so that parents can make an informed decision as to what is the best option for their child as far as in-person or virtual learning? Will this plan be released after it is approved or will it be discussed in length this evening? Thank you, Alexis Evans.
May I take that question as well, Mr. Hamburg? Dr. Hamburg?
Please do, yeah. I know we have, I know we have Mrs. Harris on the line too, so, you know, maybe some special ed questions might be appropriate for her to respond to as well.
Thank you. So again, the virtual plan will be discussed at length at the Education Committee meeting on August 4th. In terms of an IEP and a student's need regarding their IEP, whether it's in-person or in virtual, for those of you who may be watching tonight who aren't familiar with those documents, they are individualized education plans. And so what is always the case and what is always appropriate is that those decisions are made for that individual student. In fact, that's what the law demands. So we won't be broadly discussing IEPs because they are individualized, but we will, and we have in this document assured that we will comply with free and appropriate education and the, you know, all of the legalities around an individualized education plan. So those will be certainly discussed at IEP meetings with IEP teams, with IEP supervisors, special education supervisors. And as Dr. Hamburg, you mentioned, Mrs. Harris is on the call tonight. I don't know if she would want to add a word about that, but she certainly may.
I would just like to add, reiterate everything that you said, but also add in there for students who might have Chapter 15 504 agreements who require special accommodations, those as well are individualized and so it would be the same approaches we're taking to individualized education plans and that those individual teams will work out details for those students to ensure that they have appropriate access to education.
Thanks very much. Mr. Way, how about question or item three?
Question three from Deanne Snelling, 380 Northview Road, Birdsboro. My question is about Agenda Item 12. The Athletic Committee report, specifically the senior high school marching band plan. I noticed a significant change in the plan that was posted today. The change is that even outside, the band is limited to 25 people. Why is this restriction now in place? Can you explain the thinking behind it? Will the athletic teams be following the same restriction of 25 people even outside? If not, why is the band following a different plan? Thank you.
Sure, I'm happy to address that. That's actually a typographical error. We apologize for that. It should have said 250. So outside, just as the state requires, it's 250. It has not been reduced to 25. 25 is applicable to indoor spaces. So our apologies for having that type of graphical error, but we will have that corrected and when the item 12 is discussed, we'll reiterate that.
Okay, Mr. Way, our next comment?
Question six comes from Rebecca Latpek, a French teacher. Hi, one of my own children in a different district are asked to quarantine because someone in their class tests positive. Am I also expected to quarantine and vice versa?
I would respond the same way as I did to the previous question. And I think, Mr. Way, any questions that come up regarding quarantine, the answer will be that we will comply fully with the Department of Health guidelines in terms of reporting protocols and notifications.
Very good.
Thanks, Dr. Minor.
Question seven comes from Mallory Hoffman, the Executive Director of the Exeter Community Library. Hello, will the entire school close down if a single student or teacher tests positive for COVID? What will happen to that teacher's class? I guess that's the same question we just answered. Sorry about that. Question eight comes from Beth Cassis, 217 Poplar Drive, Reading, PA, and it's multi-part. So I will start reading it and we'll see how far we get. So while the plan states that there will be a virtual option for students who prefer not to be in school buildings, there is absolutely no information about the virtual option. What will the virtual option entail and how will it be implemented? How will the virtual option be offered in the fall be better than what was offered in the spring? When will this information about the virtual option be made available so that parents can make a decision of in-person versus virtual? If a student chooses in-person but gets into school and realizes they can't handle the restrictions, will they be able to switch to virtual immediately? The plan mentions collaboration between Transportation Department, schools and parents. What exactly is this supposed to look like and what is the intention? The plan indicates seating on the buses to two students per seat. How is this any different than what is already in place, especially for the older and likely larger students? Why is social distancing made out to be so critical in the school buildings but not on the school bus? Masks are being required for the entire bus ride. Some students are on the bus for a long time. My own children have been known to spend up to an hour on the bus. I believe this is far too long for a child to be wearing a mask. What accommodations are going to be made for children who cannot wear a mask for an hour? What transportation accommodations will be made for students that are exempt from wearing a mask at all? The plan indicates that cafeterias will be positioned for limited seating and new seating plans are being developed. What specifically will this look like? How are the various lunch periods going to be accommodated? The plan indicates alternate serving methods will be utilized, meaning what specifically? The plan indicates alternate scheduling for lunch periods or staggering mealtimes. I'm unclear how this can be achieved. Last year, my kids were already eating lunch at 10:20 in the morning because so many kids in the high school, they need to spread lunch periods out. How is an alternate lunch schedule going to work? According to the plan, students will be allowed to wash hands before and after a meal. Is extra time going to be allocated to the schedule to allow each student to do this, keeping in mind the required social distancing? The plan states classroom seating will be three to six feet apart to ensure social distancing. My understanding was the appropriate distance is six feet. Why is three feet even being considered? What will the new classroom set look like? Will, how will it affect class size? Are students allowed to remove their mask at their desks? If no, why? The plans indicate that spaces and procedures for movement throughout the school will be evaluated and structurally adjusted to promote social distancing. How is this going to be done? Shouldn't this be in place before the year starts? What will the typical student day look like for both the in-person and virtual options? Why eliminate the use of playgrounds for the younger students? All summer, we've been on playgrounds in our neighborhoods and even gatherings at community pools. Keeping the children off playground equipment during the much anticipated recess periods does not make sense and equates to punishment. The plan says to limit the number of people in the hallways. How exactly? The plan mentions classroom sign-outs, but isn't this already in place? How are class sign-outs going to be coordinated for classrooms in the same wing of a building? The plan indicates the limitation of restrictions of locker use. How exactly? Are students required to carry all of their materials around with them all day? Arrival and departure times are indicated to be staggered. Please be more specific. Classroom transitions will be staggered. How? The plan stipulates social distancing in classrooms, meaning what in addition to the seating arrangements?
Mr. Way, excuse me. This question has gone on for a significant amount of time and it looks like it's maybe a couple more pages. Is that correct?
That is correct.
You know, I think it's exceeding our generally accepted limit for public comment. I mean, I'm sure these are excellent questions that need to be given some consideration, certainly need to be reviewed by our administration, our team, but I think for the purposes of our board meeting, I think we should accept, you know, the document and move on. Does anyone have an objection to that? Okay.
Dave, I would say that we would accept the document, but that we would also be forthwith with a response. I mean, I don't think those questions are inappropriate. I think that the majority of people may have those questions and I'll just refer back to something that Dr. Minor said earlier is that we are going to rely on the Department of Health to assist us in a number of these issues, particularly related to the virus. But again, my personal experience with the DOH is they're not going to answer the phone on the first ring. So I think they're legitimate questions and I don't think that you're asking, I don't think you're dismissing them at all by doing this, but I do think that it's appropriate that we do respond to those questions because they're legit.
No, I think like any other public comment, you know, if a person has a real lengthy comment, they preface it, you know, at a board meeting and they hand the document over to the school board and essentially that's what we're doing. We're accepting the document as it was portrayed and we're going to move on. Please ask a question.
May I address just a couple of the points because I think they may come up in future questions?
Okay. Please do.
And in terms of Mr. Japina's comment about the Department of Health, I did want to make the board aware that there's actually a Berks County tracker lead regarding, you know, the specifics around quarantining and notifications and those sorts of things. Actually called her today regarding our football player. She did pick up immediately. We had a lengthy conversation. So while, you know, I don't disagree with Mr. Japina that at the state level, DOH can be difficult to get in touch with, there is a local Berks County person who's been extremely receptive to superintendents. So I'm hopeful that we'll see better responses regarding those things. In terms of the health and safety plan versus the virtual option, I just wanted to reiterate because I think it's a question a lot of people have tonight is about the health and safety plan specifically and the virtual option will be described in detail at August. The question about flexibility between the two, that's of paramount importance to us and we will allow flexibility between the two environments. I do want to also address the transportation question because this is one that the Department of Education has come out and I think a lot of people have questions about. They have put forth the guidance that two students to a seat, siblings seated together wherever possible and front rows left open wherever possible. And Ms. Gaidish is working with the transportation team to reevaluate bus routes where two to a seat isn't possible. And as far as, you know, whether or not students will have to wear masks, again, we, I think this is an important question. It's come up a lot in the comments that we've received. We will adhere to all the Department of Health guidelines, which say that everyone has to wear a mask if they can't distance for at least six feet unless they have an ADA compliant disability, in which case they'll have an individualized plan regarding that. And then the other topic I just wanted to make sure that I addressed was the three feet versus six feet. The state has been clear that six feet is whenever feasible and at that distance, people can remove their masks. But the American Academy of Pediatrics, the World Health Organizations and others have indicated that three feet of distance is a safe distance for students in classrooms when masks are being worn. So I think those were questions that I've heard from others and I just wanted to address and certainly if the entire list is submitted, I'd be more than happy to include them as part of an FAQ.
Dr. Minor, do you anticipate maybe at some point like a frequently asked questions area on our website that might be helpful for folks?
Yep.
Okay. Mr. Way, next question, please, or comment.
Question nine, some of the questions have been addressed. The first comment was, if you cannot meet in person for school board meetings, then why are we opening schools for face-to-face?
I can also address that question as well. Right now, the governor has indicated that, you know, you can't have more than 25 people in closed space for this period of time. And so at school board meeting, I think this evening, we have, you know, somewhere in the realm of 200 or more participants. And so we would be unable to have this meeting in that environment under the current directives.
The last part of that question, and this question comes from Jen Dixon of 29 Hearthstone Drive, was how will you guarantee the safety of my children and teachers?
Yeah, well, I would say to that, that we as school entities are never able to guarantee the safety of anyone and I don't think anyone can guarantee the safety of anyone in any circumstance. What we can guarantee is that I as superintendent, our administrative staff, our teachers, our support staff, everyone who works in the Exeter Township School District is committed to student, staff and community health, safety and well-being. And that's the guarantee that we can make that we'll continue that level of commitment. But beyond that, there are no guarantees.
Question 10 comes from Yessenia Rivera, 1802 Butter Lane. What will it look like for buses and drop-off for school and social distance for high school?
It's a great question. It's one of the questions that I'm working with Mr. Campbell, Ms. Harris is working with Mr. Campbell, Ms. Gaidish is working with Mr. Campbell. We are looking, and all of our schools, what drop-off and pickup looks like. We're considering whether or not we need to have additional drop-off times earlier in the morning, staggered drop-off times, working with the police department on traffic flow issues, those sorts of things. So we recognize that one of the challenges is going to be drop-off and pickup. That's always a challenge. It's a particular challenge in this environment, but we're considering the redeployment of staff as well as staggered schedules and community partnerships in terms of addressing that.
Question 11 comes from Jocelyn Garrick, 54 Warwick Court. How do you expect to safely manage several thousand students in your buildings, some of which are rather small and already crammed? When we're still having meetings online and by our own admission, at the start of this meeting, we're not able to publicly meet?
I don't know if there was an end part of that, Mr. Way, but again, I would just reiterate that the governor came out with new guidance regarding in-person meetings over the summer. A large part of the intention, as stated by the governor, and I would encourage everyone to go back if they haven't watched it and watch his address from last Thursday. A large part of the intention, as stated by the governor, and I would encourage everyone to go back if they haven't watched it and watch his address from last Thursday, was that by, you know, adhering to social distancing guidance uh at this point in the summer, mask wearing, uh, not convening large meetings in indoor spaces. The hope is that we'll be able to get the virus under control to the extent that schools can open safely. So we're participating as part of the uh goal oriented solution that um, the governor asked all groups to uh adhere to.
Question 12 comes from Nicole Warham, fifty-six Sycamore Drive. Could you please explain why paraprofessional hours are being cut? During a pandemic, you'd think that you would increase the hours of your paraprofessionals. I've heard the Rife and paraprofessionals are losing one hour for math support. These children will need additional support after losing quarter of a year last year and facing a challenge again at the beginning of the school year. My children will not be going to in-person school as I will protect them and the staff at, at the school. Why aren't you providing a hybrid model like other school districts in Berks County or Montgomery County? I'm currently researching different options for my children and I'd like to know more information in regards to the online learning program. Who will be overseeing this program? How will they get support if the teacher is supporting a live class? My children should not struggle because I'm keeping them safe at home during a pandemic.
So again, I, you know, I'm going to keep reiterating because I think it's an important community question. Uh, the complexities of the virtual option will be uh laid out in detail at the August fourth um education committee meeting. Um, I think there was a beginning part to that question, Mr. Way, and I apologize. It escapes me at the moment.
Uh, it was about paraprofessional hours being cut.
So again, paraprofessional hours were cut as part of the budget process. Um, I think the further point of the question was how are we going to ensure that students uh continue to learn throughout the pandemic? And that we make up for any uh instructional gaps that may have been or be created by the pandemic. That is the uh fundamental responsibility and duty of schools is to make sure that all students learn uh and make, make appropriate progress towards proficiency and attain proficiency. So we have a variety of methodologies to do that, a variety of staff members and specialists to do that. And we're confident that uh with the cut in hours, we're able to maintain um our level of instructional excellence and support all students who might have deficits uh as a result of the closure or for any other reason.
Question thirteen comes from Emily Knoll, forty-six, forty-five oh six Delmar Drive. Will students of all ages be required to wear a mask? And will students be required to prove that they have a physical or mental disability that prevents them from wearing a mask?
Yes, all students will be required to wear a mask and all students who do not wear a mask will be required to provide ADA compliant documentation that they're unable to do so as per uh Secretary Levine's directive.
Question fourteen comes from Jocelyn Garrick. Uh, I heard that from another parent and at the beginning of the ser- that, in the beginning of this meeting that a survey was sent out today. I'm a parent of two Exeter school age children, but did not receive the survey.
So the survey went out via Parent Link. If uh you're watching this site and you didn't get that survey, uh, please send an email to Patrick Winters, the Assistant Superintendent. You can find his uh address on our website and he'll make sure that you get a, a survey sent to your email directly.
Question fifteen comes from Jennifer Harvey. As we discuss equity, will there be any ability to donate masks for families' children that might need them? The ability to have a multiple, to have multiple quality masks for each child so that fresh masks are available daily is an important safety issue.
Uh, thank you for that question. So one of the uh things that we're able to do through our CARES grant funding is to purchase additional PPE. Um, as we do in the cases of uh gym sneakers, those sorts of things, students who aren't able to um have adequate supplies or clothes for school. Uh, we are able to work with those families and provide that. I would encourage Ms. Harvey and anyone else who's interested in donating to families in need to visit the Exeter CARES website and, or excuse me, Facebook page. The Exeter CARES group um has rallied around our community to provide a variety of supports. And that would be an appropriate venue to um offer additional masks for families who may be in need.
Question sixteen comes from Evan Hartman. We will be choosing the virtual option for our child. We're thankful that you are having Exeter teachers run this program and will most likely steer us away from choosing a different cyber charter option. However, we'd like to know if there will be a social piece incorporated into this instruction. Will the students be able to interact with same age peers to continue to encourage friendships and social and emotional development? Also, is it possible to take the parent survey? If so, is it still possible to take the parent survey? If so, where can I find it? We did not find it in emails from ETSC and cannot find it on the website. What precautions will you put in place to protect teachers? Our teachers are not medical professionals and will not have the same protective gear. They'll be exposed to a large number of children, of students in crowded classrooms. They'll be working with young children who will have different, who will have a very difficult time with these mandates. How are you planning on protecting teachers?
Uh, Mr. Way, I think there was four parts to that question and um, they were, they were kind of broad and different. So I think I, I may miss one in this. Um, in terms of the virtual option, again, we'll go into the details of that on August fourth. Uh, in terms of social interaction with students participate in virtual, um, be largely dependent on the conditions on the ground at that time. Um, although any student who, you know, is uh in our, any of Exeter schools are eligible for any extracurricular opportunities or socialization opportunities that the school sponsors. And again, that will be um condition dependent. Um, can you, can you read me the other parts?
Uh, there was a question about the survey, which we, it, we will make sure we um get their name on the list and get them the survey.
Right, the survey is still open, so um, you can, you know, Mr. Way is uh able to get your email right now so we can get that out to you. And then in terms of protecting teachers, um, the school district uh has purchased uh face shields that, that teachers may utilize if they wish in addition to their own masks or instead of their own masks. Uh, in high uh risk uh situations, for instance, students uh in special populations who may not be able to mask or may need assistance with other bodily functions. Uh, Mrs. Harris uh will be coordinating with Mrs. Guidish to ensure that uh higher levels of PPE are provided to those teachers as we're organizing classroom space. We are making sure that we have a um, a distance between the teacher and the students uh in terms of instructional space. So protecting our teaching staff is of paramount importance, uh both because they're our employees and our family to a large extent as well as um, we obviously need teachers to do the very important that work that we have to do with, with students. So uh, just as protecting student health is, is a, as a priority, it's an absolutely equal priority to protect staff health and we're planning accordingly.
Question seventeen comes from John and Amy Fori, one, uh, ten, ten Hartman Road. Could you please clarify the three foot minimum? Isn't the recommendation six feet? Will there be specific instructions presented to parents and children about entering the school, going to lockers, going to the bathroom, changing classes? What date will this information be available? We, will we know which teachers will be wearing masks so that we can make decisions for our children? When will we, when will we have to make our decision for in-school virtual trip or virtual learning?
Okay, uh, there's again several questions there. In terms of the three feet versus six feet, again, as I mentioned previously, um, the state's been very clear that it's six feet when feasible. Um, but uh, distance of less than three feet, as long as uh, everyone involved is wearing a mask is um, is uh appropriate. And again, three feet is the guidance from the American Academy of Pediatrics and the World Health Organization. Um, and so that will be our minimum that, that we will um maintain. In terms of um, whether or not there'll be specific instruction regarding all the procedures and protocols, there will be. That's part of our uh planning process. We will have um instructional videos, we'll have uh specific um professional development trainings, handbooks, written guidance. Um, we'll communicate in a variety of ways that are age appropriate to make sure that all students um understand how to keep themselves and others safe. In terms of a teacher who's not wearing a mask, a teacher who's not wearing a mask will not be providing direct instruction to students unless there is a barrier between that teacher and students.
The last part of that was when will we have to make a decision for in-school or virtual learning?
Thank you, Mr. Way. Um, that decision we anticipate sending out uh and asking parents to make that determination will be uh in mid-August. So it will be well after the virtual presentation at the education uh committee meeting.
Question eighteen comes from Joseph Hepp, forty-seven twenty-seven Allison Road. Uh, the reasoning that students, the reasoning that students on isolated days would gather with one another and increase exposure seems very presumptive. And you are only concerned with ours, with, with school hours. What about after school? What about athletics or community sports? Students are just as exposed in these settings. Was this one, was this the only reason the AB or alternate day schedule was dismissed? The district received high praise for the virtual learning in the spring. Why not continue that model while we also, while also getting our students back in classrooms? What are the district's distancing guidelines? How many feet can each classroom distance student, distance students and teachers six feet? For the governor's strong recommendation, it seems a good idea. A good deal of credibility was given to the governor's anticipation of those, of things getting worse. Is the same consideration being given to social distancing recommendations?
Uh, okay, so in terms of, you know, the presumption around people gathering. So I just wanted to add clarity around that point. When uh, the Mathematica Group came out, that was the, the independent uh research council that the Department of Education hired to consider virtual models, uh in-person models and hybrid models. Their modeling was dependent on uh students self-isolating on those off days in order to infer a safety benefit. And so um, because we recognize that we can't um, in any way, shape or form, ensure that that would happen. We don't see a particular safety benefit uh being gained in terms of that hybrid model. So that was one of many reasons. But another, a primary reason for not moving forward with the hybrid model was the inability of parents to access childcare as well as the inability for our own teachers and staff to access um care for their own children who reside in the district if they're not uh being in schools on those days. And then the potential of being understaffed as a consequence. In terms of um, the question about six feet and, you know, referencing the governor. Again, the Department of Health, the Secretary of Health has indicated that six feet is the distance at which you need to be separated in order to not wear a mask. Um, and masking is required. And so again, six feet is ideal whenever feasible. Um, and would allow students and staff to remove their masks. It is exactly that whenever feasible. And so that's how we're moving forward. And I think maybe there was another question there that I might have missed, Mr. Way.
Uh, I believe you addressed them. Yes. Uh, I, I guess the AB question, but.
That was in hybrid.
Yeah. All right, question nineteen is from Rochelle Mouse, ten fifty-one Butter Lane. I'd like to see examples of changes that will be made to classrooms, uh before and after, so to say. Since I know what my kids kindergarten classroom looked like, tables, not separate desks, smaller room and size, class size. It's too bad they got rid of all those desks last year. Curious about busing. How will, how will that be since it was three seats, three kids to a seat before? Are there enough buses and drivers or fewer students in each seat? Will we have lunch recess specials in classroom or going in to other rooms? Cleaning regimens and frequency. What will the virtual option look like? YouTube videos similar to last year? What about IP's of apparent ops for virtual? August sixth, August fourth, will that give parents the opportunity to pick one or the other in enough time before school starts? Regarding complacency, being late, not raising a hand, et cetera, isn't generally going to be, going to affect students other than non-compliant students? This definitely, this definitely a whole other ballgame. What happens if a student or a teacher in the classroom is impelled to self-quarantine? How does it look, how does it work for that class? So many questions. Thanks.
Yeah, there, there definitely are so many questions. In terms of what classrooms will look like, um, one of the things that we'll seek to do in our communication is provide, you know, photographs or, you know, virtual tours of what those would look like prior to the opening of school. In terms of busing, as I stated previously, the, the Pennsylvania Department of Education, Department of Health have indicated that it should be stu- two students to a seat on school buses. And Mrs. Guidish is working with her Transportation Department on adjusting routes in order to be able to make those routes compliant with that guidance. In terms of lunch and recess, where those will be held and how they will be held. It's largest school dependent based on the availability, for ins- for instance, of um nearby gymnasium space, uh classrooms, those sorts of things. So that would, you know, there's not a blanket answer I can give for the whole district because each building is um designed differently. We absolutely want to maximize uh recess time. We recognize that for students to get out, to get fresh air, to get exercise, to have an opportunity to be uh distant and, and have mask breaks, those sorts of things is critically important. I know there was a question previously about why we are closing uh playground equipment when it's been open um in the communities. Again, you know, we don't have any um, you know, uh jurisdiction over what happens in communities and whether or not playgrounds are open. But in a very short period of time in a school, hundreds of children can touch the exact same playground equipment versus what you would expect in an open playground environment where there's much, uh, it's much more likely to have fewer children and longer distance between children using it. Um, and in terms of specials and the location of specials, at this point, you know, we're working with uh, our, our principals uh and talking with our teachers, but we're anticipating that um, a lot of specials will take place in classrooms versus in the uh special room uh due to the uh, the structure of those rooms in terms of tables, seedings, et cetera. Again, the virtual option will be discussed at length. IP's for virtual was, was addressed previously, but they will continue to be individualized. Uh, parents will not be asked to choose between the options until after the August fourth presentation about virtual. Um, I'm sorry, I'm, I can't read my, my rating on this next particular one. And then again, the question was about quarantine. And again, I'm going to say that we are going to refer to DOH. So I think there's one that I can't read my rating, Joe, that I might have missed.
Was it the cleaning regiment?
The cleaning regiment again are um, are, are addressed uh in the plan in terms of, you know, what cleaners we, we'll use and the frequency of cleanings. And then I think, oh, I think the comment was it's a, it's a whole other ballgame and I wanted to agree completely. It's exactly that.
Question twenty-one comes from Joan Vicio. Hello, I'm sitting here listening to all of the great questions being asked and I have the same questions. And I don't feel we're being informed with very specific information about how the, the district is going to handle this very real and scary situation. Replacing our children in your hands and feel there should be a very specific answer to each and every one and not just the general response that has been given throughout this board meeting. How are we supposed to make the decision about sending our kids back to the building or keep them home when we're not being informed appropriately? If you won't be answering all, each and every question in live video, that's a terrible shame. Because I can tell even your teachers and librarians are concerned with, with your plans and don't know what's going on. This is a shame.
You know, I don't know if there's a question there. Was there, was that a comment, Mr. Way?
Yes. Uh, twenty-two is from John and Amy Fori. The DOH has a question that says, if I'm inside a public place and I can maintain social distancing, do I need to wear a mask? Yes, unless you fit one of the exemptions included in section three of the order, does not apply to school. Yes, this order applies to all students, staff and visitors aged two and older. Why did you say that masks can be off at six feet?
Because that is the guidance that schools have been given, that students can take um mask breaks and can remove their mask, for instance, in order to eat their lunch. Um, obviously you can't eat with a mask on or to drink water, but that that needs to be at a six foot distance. So we've been given that specific guidance as schools.
Question twenty-three comes from Josh Hoyt, forty-five eleven Edgewood Drive. What will be the process to determine gaps in learning instruction for students in the district from the spring of twenty twenty? Especially students in the primary grades? And how will those gaps be addressed in addition to new grade level content for twenty twenty-one? Thank you for all you're doing. These are uncharted, challenging times and there are no right answers. I hope you all remain safe and well.
Well, thank you. I certainly appreciate um, Mr. Boyd's well wishes and the recognition that these are indeed uh very challenging times. In terms of assessing student gaps, um, we will do that through the utilization of uh standards-based assessments. Um, we have uh invested in uh expanding the use of the um STAR Computer Adaptive Assessment System, which uh targets uh specific standards for students and will be utilizing that information, comparing it to last year um and designing instructional programs. Well, also in terms of just moving everybody forward, um, once we have that review of standards and the potential gaps, look at um addressing power standards and refining and streamlining our curriculum so that we can ensure that uh gaps are made up for and we continue to move students um ahead in terms of proficiency. So in short, it will be a, a careful combination of uh individual student assessment, system assessment, and then um individual student plans as well as system plans regarding curriculum revisions. and then individual student plans as well as system plans regarding curriculum revisions.
Question 24 comes from Jocelyn Garrick. Do you have any concerns that P P E will not be able to be obtained for the school year due to increasing needs and shortages of P P Es in hospital settings? As an ICU nurse working directly with COVID during this pandemic, I can tell you that I have been deprived of proper P P E and needed to ensure my own safety. How can you guarantee our staff and underprivileged population proper P P E throughout this entire pandemic?
Thank you. That's a very, very important question. And Mrs. Guidish has been working on already obtaining and storing P P E as well as cleaners and disinfectants, et cetera. So we are stockpiling them in advance in terms of opening and the needs around opening. We'll continue to purchase them throughout the year. In the event that at some point we would find ourselves unable to secure appropriate P P E or disinfectant, that would be a situation in which I would utilize the resolution and order schools closed until we were able to ensure that we had adequate P P E and disinfecting materials.
Question 25 comes from Joan Vicio. In addition to all the great questions everyone has asked so far that I hope are truly answered with very specific information, I have this question. You've talked about all, you've talked at all about, you haven't talked at all about the schools, how the schools will be cleaned throughout the day and each night to prepare for the next day. What are your specific plans to keep everything clean and everything safe? Thank you.
Yeah, it's an extremely important question. There are certainly details of it in our plan. Mrs. Guidish, would you like to make any comment about your plans in terms of increasing cleaning protocols, that sort of thing?
I'll just say, make a few comments. Facility Department will strive to comply with all CDC recommendations regarding cleaning and disinfecting in regard to COVID-19. Obviously, we'll continue our routine cleaning and disinfecting. But the emphasis will be placed on cleaning frequently touched surfaces and objects, which would include but are not limited to doorknobs and handles, stair rails, classroom desks and chairs, lunchroom tables and chairs, countertops, handrails, light switches, handles on equipment, push buttons on vending machines, shared equipment, computer equipment, and other high contact surfaces. I mean, there will be more rigorous cleaning in staff and student bathrooms. And again, we will remain flexible and we'll work with building administrators to focus on the resources we have and trying to, you know, keep those high touch and high traffic areas clean.
Thank you, Mrs. Guidish.
Question 26 comes from Raina Ballack. And it addresses the question of will students in the virtual option be able to have in person extracurricular activities? If they're comfortable spending smaller amounts of time in school with a smaller group of students, are extracurricular activities being curtailed or redesigned in any way due to current health guidelines? Thank you so much for addressing these questions during a very challenging time.
Absolutely. It's an excellent question, and I think it's one of the important things that that our community needs to understand and know. When students are in our Exeter Township Virtual School, they are Exeter students. And so they are available to access all things Exeter, including our extracurricular activities and our athletics. In terms of what what curtailments may be required, those will be specific to the activity, whether or not that activity can be conducted under D O H guidelines such as our athletics plan. We'll hear later tonight about our band reopening plan. And so those will be individually dependent on the nature of the activity. But absolutely, one of the things that's incredibly important to us, again, why we're so pleased to be working with our Teachers Association, while we're so pleased to be offering our own virtual option is really keep our kids connected not only to our curriculum but to our school as a whole, which of course is very importantly inclusive of our extracurricular activities.
Question 27 comes from Bill Kaufman, 32 Longview Drive. Since there are restrictions on shared surfaces, will students be allowed to bring water bottles if they are attending in school? Can't wait for the kids to be back in school.
Well, thank you, Mr. Kaufman, you and me both. You know, whenever that occurs, I I am very much looking forward to and excited to meet the students in Exeter. That is one group that I have not gotten to interact at all yet with, and I am extremely eager to do so. In terms of water bottles and and water in general, that's a very important consideration. And it's one that again, Dr. Hubbard, our consultant from Reading Pediatrics, really wanted the school to focus on, and we have. Schools are required to provide potable water free of charge to students. And yet bubbling water fountains like the kind we have in most school settings are considered to be health hazards in the pandemic. And so we will be turning off or or closing access to our school water fountains. When possible, we are going to be using grant funds to replace those water fountains with water dispensing systems that allow students to use refilling water bottles. And and we will absolutely encourage families to send water bottles in with their students, either full or empty, that can be filled using those filling stations. For families who can't afford the bottles or who forget or don't bring in water, we'll also be providing access to bottled water as needed to ensure student safety regarding access to water and the safety around water fountain. So thank you. That's an important question and consideration.
Question 28 comes from Nikki Warham, 56 Sycamore Drive. Teachers have used many of the best practices in the classroom such as, but not limited to guided reading, guided math, small group cooperation, collaboration, manipulatives, hands on learning, experiments, et cetera. How do you expect your teachers to participate in the best practices that are backed with studies if your teachers need to keep a six foot distance or three foot distance from students?
It's it's a terrific question, and there isn't a good answer to it. You know, as an educational leader, I place very high value on small group instructional practices, particularly guided reading and guided math, cooperative instruction, cooperative work among students. And it is one of those sacrifices that is being made everywhere in education right now in the interest of public health. On either the virtual school setting or in the in person setting, there is definitely a loss in terms of not being able to, you know, be in in close proximity to students. It is, it's something that I that brings me a particular sadness because I've spent a good portion of my career focusing on and working with teachers around guided reading. And so we're going to be working hard with our reading specialists, our instructional specialists to think about what are ways that we can solve the same problems in terms of student learning needs in different environments and in different settings. And we will all look forward to the day when we can return to the guided reading table and return to cooperative learning. It is fundamental to what schools do and it is. It's one of the, you know, many disappointments that have come along with this pandemic is that we won't won't be able to engage in that in the way we have in the past.
Question 29 comes from Patients Forsight, 115 Rugby Road. Providing that students do resume to in full to full time in person status, will upcoming seventh grade students be given the opportunity to tour the junior high prior to school starting?
Yeah, it's a great question, and that question actually pertains to the transition at every level of our school district. Our principals have been very much aware of those transition activities and what they've done in the past. They are working as a collaborative group to talk about in person and virtual options in terms of planning for transition. So in our principal subgroup, transition at every level is is a priority. And you'll be hearing more from the building principals regarding that.
Thank you, Dr. Hamburger. I believe that was the last question.
Thank you, and that's just about. We just got in just under an hour. So thank you, great job, Dr. Minor. I mean, you mentioned to me that you have been laser focused on these issues and the development of this plan. And it is very clear to me that you and your team have thought about this as thoroughly as you can. I mean, it, there are so many obvious situations that are just going to be very difficult to really kind of understand the impact until we actually go through it. But I think you you've done a phenomenal job, and I want to thank you for your comments, your response. Excellent, and and the work of your your team.
Thank you, Dr. Hamburger. I greatly appreciate that, and I do want to really say you know, there there's no possible way that I could have answered the questions this evening or written this plan without the tremendous help and support of all of those people listed in those groups and subgroups. I couldn't be more proud, more pleased by the dedication, the thoughtfulness of all of the people who have been involved and all of those people who have expressed interest in being involved. So they they all make me be able to to present the way I was tonight because of their hard work, their dedication. So.
Yeah, thank you. And I also want to thank all those folks who took the time to submit questions. I mean, I I thought virtually all those questions were relevant, important, and I think will serve as a good foundation for us to kind of build from when we start to refine the plan.
Dave, I'd like to ask one question of Dr. Minor. You know, the healthcare, the backbone of the healthcare system are nurses. And I'd be curious to know what actions we've undertaken to either educate and or prepare our nurses? And what are we looking in terms of potential additional resources? Because everybody in every school is going to be looking to that clinical professional for guidance and support, emotional support and all kinds of stuff. And I'm just wondering what we've done on that end.
Thank you, Mr. Chapina. Again, an extremely important question, and I'm very pleased to share that our nurses were abundantly helpful throughout this process, extremely willing to share, have spent a good portion of the time since the pandemic, educating themselves, attending conferences. We have nurses who actually have worked in hospital settings with COVID patients who are very familiar with the pandemic and other clinical settings. And we're committed to continuing to support our nurses, educate our nurses, you know, and and listen to their feedback as we move through this process. I've been extremely pleased. I'm all, I'm going to give Mrs. Harris as the the director who directly oversees nurses an opportunity to say a few words about what she's seen on the ground so far and the plans moving forward with the nurses.
So the nurses participated in the initial planning pieces of developing the plan, but now they're also continuing on as a sub subgroup of this plan and meeting with me and meeting with building administrators to continue working on the details of our plans moving forward. I will say, I agree with you. I think, you know, a lot of folks feel the burden of this responsibility. And certainly nurses are at the core of feeling that burden of responsibility. But I will say, we are not expecting our nurses to be COVID experts. They're not expected to diagnose or test or anything like that for COVID-19. They are simply responsible for being educated on the symptoms and the CDC guidance as it relates to health practitioners within the school setting. And that's the work that we're doing with them and relying on their expertise in terms of helping us develop procedures and protocols that are consistent throughout the district in terms of developing isolation areas and responding to issues as they arise.
Folks, it's about 10 after 9:00. I'm going to suggest we take a five minute break and just leave everything in place, maybe mute your your mics and mute your video, and we'll return at precisely 9:15 for the remainder of our meeting. Thank you. Okay, I've got 9:15. Hoping that we have our board members back. I don't see everyone's face yet, but I see people coming onboard. Do we have Mr. Fidler? Oh, there's Mr. Fidler. Okay, so we're back. Let's get back on track with our agenda. Thanks, everybody. Just want to move back into our board agenda, and we are in section five. And this is a school board resolution. And I'll just, I'm not going to read through it, but I will preface my statements by just saying that the resolution is an anti racist school climate resolution. It's a resolution supporting the development of an anti racist school climate. school climate resolution. It's a resolution supporting the development of an anti-racist school climate that would be adopted by the Board of School Directors. And I think it had been referenced in the presentation by Dr. McLendon.
Oh, Dr. Hamburger, can I, when you're done, can I say a couple of things about it?
Oh, sure, sure. And I'm going to make a, I'm going to make a recommendation. I'm going to make a motion and then at the conclusion or during that discussion period of time, Dr. McLendon, feel free to make your comments as well as anyone else. So let me just reiterate by saying that the it's a recommendation of the Board of School Directors to approve the resolution the resolution supporting the development of an anti-racist school climate, which includes the development of an equity committee.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, I just, I know it's long and we're not reading it, but I just pulled a couple of things from it that I think were important to mention. That it's basically overall all goal is to support an anti-racism climate. And a few things from there is the statement that racism racism and hate have no place in our school, in society, and that we want to build partnerships in the community, focus on overcoming racism and other barriers. And we, as a board, must look at our own school policies and practices through an anti-racist and anti, I mean, anti-racist and equity lens. And part of this resolution includes letting, listing the things, the action steps. And so the things that were mentioned earlier in our presentation for our equity group with those goals, they were attached to the bottom of this to let, you know, inform PSBA of what our district plans, plans to do. So, okay, that's what I wanted to, you know, there's other things that people can read, but those were some things that I thought were really important.
Thanks, Dr. McLendon.
Oh, I wonder, one other thing I just want to say. A number, a lot of districts, this is went out to all 500 school districts, of course, and there are a lot of, lot of, huge number of school districts that have already adopted it. So we are joining that, you know, the other districts in doing this.
And I think the one thing that we've, that has been a part of this, of this resolution incorporates some of the goals that have been established locally by our, our own Equity and Diversity Committee. So I, I think those are included in the last paragraph of the document.
And I just want to say one more thing. I forgot I had pulled this out. As you know, Congressman John Lewis passed away a few days ago. He was a giant in the civil rights movement. And I like this quote because it actually speaks to the anti-racism resolution. But he said, "If you see something that is not right, not fair, not just, you have a moral obligation to do something about it." And so I think by us adopting this resolution, we're taking that mindset, you know, of what, what can we do? With systemic racism.
Is there any further discussion?
I just want to thank the folks that have been working on this, Hunter and Anne and Hury and Sharon. I mean, the whole board is interested, but those guys clearly have been carrying the water in terms of organizing this work and I am thankful for your efforts.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion, oh, motion carries.
No, go ahead.
Now, I want to, I want to turn to Hury and Hury, I know that, you know, we were discussing the designation of our committee and giving it a formal status associated with this operation. Do you want to walk us through a motion that would clarify the status of this committee?
Sure. So we, you know, based on, we've already had a presentation about it already. The new, the name of the new committee is going to be the Equity and Excellence at Exeter Committee. And this is going to be a basically set up as a citizens' action group for the, for this school district under Policy 905. So I would like to make a motion to make the Equity and Excellence at Exeter a citizens' action group for the Exeter School District under Policy 905.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Hury, just, just out of curiosity, I mean, how are you defining that group? What's the, what's the role? What is, what's the? Yeah, I assume it doesn't have any necessarily, it has moral authority more than anything else, correct?
It's moral, it's a whole pile of things. I mean, we went over the whole presentation. There's a lot of things involved and even trying to make sure there's equity in terms of the, the employees, understanding of even the teachers having an understanding of equity, even some of the areas of curriculum, we're trying to get into detail about that. So every kid and every, you know, you know, LBGQ, all types of areas for which our school district, you know, has, you know, kids involved in these areas, they will all be represented in some sort of way. So it's a full, it's a very large scope, but we're feeling that it's going to definitely make a very big difference in our school district and how we look at our, even how our teachers interact about our kids. So that's, it's a very, very large type of scope, but it's going to be focused in certain areas.
Can I just add, I know last month when I had mentioned this and it was suggested that we do a citizens advisory group and I, I was under the impression that that was just going to be like a communication and talking group. And so US is this going to be like a moral, you know, authority or is what you said. And really, you know, it's all those things that Hury mentioned, but we, we are an action group. And those goals that were listed there and the goals that we came up with are things that we plan to look at and get a, get a plan, do some kind of action. So I'm, I was against citizens advisory, but you know, and I understand that that doesn't limit, you know, what we can do as, as a district. And because of the people that we have on our committee, we know, we have, we're going to be doing some, some work.
So I'm excited about this. I appreciate, you know, I guess hopefully you guys will vote for it and get this thing going. But there's a lot of things that we have planned for the school district and I think it's going to work very well for, for everybody. And I'd like to thank everybody that's involved.
Thanks, Hury. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Okay, we're going to move on to the item six in our board agenda. And this is two sets of word minutes. One is the board workshop minutes of June 16th and the board voting minutes of June 23rd. It's recommended the school, Board of School Directors approve those two sets of minutes.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. The Treasurer's Report, item 7. 7A Treasurer's Report is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the Treasurer's report for June of 2020.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Item 7B Payment Requests. It's recommended the Board of School Directors approve payment requests for a period of time of June 24, 2020 to July 21, 2020.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. School Board Policy. We have two sections here. The first section, Policies Listed A Through G, are policies that have been subject to our initial first reading. They sat for 30 days and now they are up for final approval. They include Policy 103 and Non-Discrimination Discriminatory Harassment in School and Classroom Practices. Another policy, 103.1 Non-Discrimination Qualified Students with Disabilities. 104 Non-Discrimination Discriminatory Harassment for Employment Practices. 105 Curriculum. 108 Textbooks. And 138 Language Instruction Educational Programs for English Learners, as well as Admission of Students Policy 201. So I move that the board approve Policies Listed A Through G in the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion about any of these policies?
Dave, I have a question on Policy 103 and this is probably more for Ellis. But not too long ago, he had shared with us a court ruling regarding Mahanoi City High School. And it had to do with the behavior of the student outside of the classroom. And so when I looked at, I believe it was Policy 103, there were, you know, some, there was some information in there that we would be monitoring a, you know, a behavior student outside of the classroom. You know, if they said things, you know, outside of school or in some sort of a setting that was not school oriented, that that would be a factor in the execution of the elements of this policy. And I'm wondering if Ellis has an opinion on that.
Mike, I'm not, I'm looking at the policy and I guess I'm not seeing specifically what is you're referencing.
Hang on, I'll see if I can come up with it, but I believe that, let's see.
Hey, Mike, can I just jump in for a second?
Yep.
You know, I kind of think one of the things you're referencing is a recent court decision whereby that what was formerly viewed as a nexus between what happened outside of school and in school, particularly with harassment that might be related to the use of the internet, used to have some control, school district had some control if we could, if we could identify it, it represented a significant disruption, disruption to the school operation. And I think, and Ellis, I think you're probably familiar with this, that that was overturned, or at least there was a ruling on that, and it sort of took away the district's control over that, that element where districts could actually sanction or discipline students for maybe some behavior that rose to that level. It might, it might.
Yeah, no, no, that's, that's exactly what I'm referring to. And if you go to paragraph four under Authority in that document that we're looking at, it says that they would report such incidents to designated employees, even if some elements of the related incident took place or originated away from school grounds, school activity or school conveyance, conveyances. So if I recall, and again, I'm not, I could be wrong on this, but if I recall the opinion that Ellis shared with us, that was a student who made a statement in social media while not involved in a school activity or event and the court found on her behalf. Is that correct?
So the, the rulings still required some nexus between some substantial disruption to the school setting before the school could even consider taking any action against an individual for off-school misconduct. And I have a case in front of us, in front of me right now. And I still believe that the fundamentals of that ruling are still viable. But essentially, the court made it clear that the disruption's got to be substantial anything that occurs at school premises can be considered as a basis for student discipline.
So what I'm saying is that this says that, that so that any, what would occur, some discriminatory, discriminatory activity that would occur outside of school, the district could still act on.
Provided that there was that substantial disruption.
So then the real issue is how do we define substantial disruption?
That's right. So the policy has to be interpreted in a way that's consistent with the First Amendment protections that the student have. It doesn't preclude consideration, but it's got to be consistent with the First Amendment protections.
Okay, thank you.
And Mike, I think we, you know, some of our internet policies, you know, and student use of technology policies might be more applicable. You know, this one is, but this is another policy too that I will say, I heard something recently from our administration that this may be, this may be further refined. This is one of the policies that we were trying to catch up on and had been revised, you know, since the 2017 series of policies that we got. So this was, this came from PSBA from 2018. There may be a 2020 revision that we see. So we're going to pass it. We're going to move to the next. And then, and then, and then when the new policy comes in 2000, we'll kind of incorporate that one and revise that one again.
Okay.
Yeah. Where, where, are we still in the discussion phase here? I think we may have been. Or did we vote on this already? I apologize.
We didn't.
Okay, so any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Okay, we're going to move down to Policies HI, J, K, L and M in the agenda. And these are for first reading. And because we didn't have our, our workshop meeting, I'm going to spend a little bit of time, you know, with each one of these, and I'll just describe a little bit about what each one of these policies entails, or at least the modifications to these policies. So bear with me here and stop me anywhere along the way if you have any questions. Policy 150 is Title I Comparability of Services. This is a new policy. And it's been, it's necessary to kind of, you know, it basically includes a statement that articulates the method of determination for school entities to demonstrate compliance, you know, with this, with comparability of Title I services. So according to PDE, school entities can use a staff-to-student ratio or a previous year per pupil expenditures to determine Title I comparability, whichever works in their favor. So this sort of clarifies the standard whereby we establish comparability of services in Title I. And Dr. Winters is, I think, if I'm not mistaken, Dr. Winters, you're responsible for overseeing, you know, Title I in general, the title programs. I don't know if you had any other thoughts about this or whether this is something that you've dealt with previously.
Yes, so thank you, Dr. Hamburger. Yes, my department does oversee title services. There's a comparability report that needs to be submitted each year to the state, which we submit. And we use the student-staff ratio method in Exeter to determine comparability. And every year I've been here and my understanding is even prior to, we've never had issues meeting comparability in the district.
Great, thank you. Policy 204, folks might recall that the compulsory school age definition was changed. Compulsory school age was previously defined as ages eight through 17. The change was made to ages six to 18. So school attendance is mandatory starting at eight up through 18 years old. And so the policy's also been modified for that reason and to update, to make some updates in terms of some consistency in terminology. The policy will also include some optional sign-off statements and then some information about, you know, excusal from school and some, and some. And some rationale for that circumstances related to homelessness and foster care. There's one section in this policy that was modified, or we're going to have to go back and include it. The administration had eliminated some language from section nine point nine A and B. And that language is actually embedded in school code. So we're going to have to go back. You'll see that in red in the policy. We're going to go back. And, and, and put that back in. During this, after the first reading here. So you'll see that change in, in the first reading. Policy two oh eight withdrawal from school, again, updated to reflect new compulsory school age definition. Two oh nine, the health examinations and screening. And has to do with, you know, special examinations for students where it appears that a student. Has been identified as deviating from the normal growth and development by our school health staff. So. You know, the. There's some language that addresses that. Also, some language added that makes it required that when there's a reasonable suspicion. Of any type of child abuse, that there's a. There's a requirement to, to report. There's also a component of this that has to do with disclosing information from health records to appropriate parties in connection with an emergency. If the knowledge of the information is necessary to protect the health and safety of the student. So that's a kind of a FERPA. Modification that's essential in only cases of extreme emergency where exposing that kind of information is really necessary for the. Safety of the student or others. Policy two ten point one is an update on the possession and administration of asthma inhalers and epinephrine auto injectors. It includes a definition of. Some definition updates and also some clarification for the possession and administration of asthma inhalers and epinephrine auto injectors. It also includes statements from the school nurse. I that the student can demonstrate the capacity for self administration of an inhaler or an injector. And also a written acknowledgement from the student that they've received instructions for that. Administration. Finally, the two thousand or two hundred and thirty nine policy foreign exchange students. You know, this has been modified to comply. To information in terms of complying with the district's enrollment process. Which includes the administration of a home language survey. And. You know, this also requires assessment and identification of, of English language, English learners, which are called now. And used to refer to these programs as ESL, English Language Instruction. Now it's referred to differently as Language Instruction Education Program. Which is LIEP. So those were some modifications made to this existing, you know, foreign exchange policy that. Were necessary to kind of bring them up to. To speed with the codes. So I'm recommending that. We, the board approve. You know, policies listed in the agenda. H through M for first reading. I'll accept a second.
Second.
Thank you. Sorry to put you guys asleep. Any, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And carries. Thanks, thanks for your indulging us.
It was Hunter's fault. He's like the youngest guy here. He should have been right on that.
He should have been on top of that for sure.
I'm trying to share with everybody.
Well, so Hunter, it's your opportunity now. Business functions, Mr. Aaron's.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Hamburger. So the first agenda item is going to be a recommendation to extend the acceptance, the acceptance of X. I can't even talk. Of X flex receipts through the seventeenth of July. This is a retroactive approval. And the reason for that was delays in appointments and other such issues due to the statewide closure. From the coronavirus. So I'll just read it formally. It is recommended that the board of school directors will ask the submission of X flex receipts through July seventeenth, two thousand and twenty. Reimbursement due to the delay in medical, dental, and eye appointments caused by statewide closure.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
The next one, it is recommended that the board of school directors approves the submission of Plan Con Part K to the Pennsylvania Department of Education for General Obligation Bonds. Series two thousand and twenty issued for the current refunding of the General Obligation Bonds, series two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fifteen A and two thousand and fifteen B. And correct me if I'm wrong here, but basically this is reporting the bonds that we just issued as a refinance for the previous. Series that was just approved, I believe it was at the, the May meeting and that we executed on in June. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, Board Docs Pro. As many of us received in our report from Dr. Minor, there is a desire for the administration to begin using the Board Docs Pro. Program. I reviewed it myself, and I believe that there are some future ready things. That are going to be of benefit to our administration in preparing not only the agendas, but also board policies for the board. And beyond that, having a better cataloging of many of the documents. And I can say personally that I will. Really take advantage of that myself, rather than having to search through and remember which agenda certain things were approved on. You know, I do want to make one comment, which is just that, I just want to stress to our administration, and I'm not questioning. Whether they're going to be using this one, because I think and believe that they will be. But we just want to be cognizant that we are investing money into many of these software programs, this being a good example. And we want to be sure that we're using them to the full capacity because there are cheaper options available. So Dr. Minor has demonstrated to my satisfaction that this will be used in a productive way to better support the board and the district. So I will recommend that the Board of School Directors approves an amendment to the Board Docs end user agreement. To utilize Board Docs Pro at an annual fee of ten thousand five hundred dollars.
Second.
Any discussion?
I would also say that since we've had Board Docs, I've been on the board about seven years. I think it really has. At least made information available to the public in a much more timely manner, in a much more comprehensive manner. And I think that that really. Reinforces the point that we are as transparent as we can be with information. Sometimes you just have to know where to look and Board Docs makes it relatively easy to look for that information.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves budget transfers in the amount of eighty nine thousand six hundred and thirty dollars.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
So before I go further into this next one. We all know that I can talk for a long time, and I know that we are here. Later than we usually like to be this morning. So I'm going to try and be as brief as possible with this. Basically, what this question and conversation is, is about whether or not to issue. New money as a part of our next bond refinancing. So setting aside the new money issue for a quick second, the next bond refinancing poses an opportunity to save hundreds of thousands of dollars for the district. Similar to what we just did in May. And it's going to be important that we, in my opinion, carry that out as soon as possible. And I think our current. Timeline has that decision being made at the August voting meeting. A part of that conversation is also this being a good time to discuss and potentially issue new monies for the capital projects that we anticipate. In the next three years, and then also how that affects projects until we really see a drop off of our debt in two thousand and twenty nine, two thousand and thirty school year. So there are really a couple of different issues here, but I'm going to narrow them to two, really. The first one is whether or not we should issue new money, just generally speaking. And what I want to say about that really quick is that we have a number of projects that we know we need to meet the commitment for. These have to do with HVAC, different safety issues, roof replacements. So these, these are not in, in what I would say optional maintenance issues. We know that based on our current funds and the estimates that KCBA has done for us and that they've redone for us several times. That these projects will not be afforded without additional funding. That comes from three places. The general fund, the capital fund, or new monies from bond issues. And if we are not going to create large budget deficits year over year, just. Due to increasing our capital commitments in the general fund, then we need to find somewhere else to get this money. Thereby, the best place being, as we currently see it, is the option to borrow new monies in this next bond reissue. So that, that's the first point. The second point is how much should we borrow? What the administration has been able to report back is that our bond council is advising us that we need to. Have general use of about eighty five percent of those funds within the three years after the bond is issued and the money received. We have a list here that's attached in the agenda of projects that amount to, I think, about three point six million with some change. That would be able to fit within that. Within those parameters. The, I think, and Anne or Kim, correct me if I'm wrong, the recommendation of the administration at this point. Is to borrow for those projects that can be accomplished in the next three years, so about three point six million dollars. There is also in that decision. Should we borrow less? You know, I will make a case for the fact that I think we should borrow less. It'll enable us, it'll force us to better prioritize. Our projects and then also try and be as competitive in our bidding processes as possible. I would suggest two point five million dollars. But I will vote for the issuance of new money up to three point six, if that's the way the rest of the board would like to move. I can certainly try and answer any questions. I know Anne and Kim are far more capable than I am of answering any questions that you may have. But the discussion tonight should really be oriented to two questions that each board member should probably want to try and answer our way in on. The first being, should we borrow new money? And the second one being, how much should that be? So I will leave it, my comments at that, there will be further opportunity to discuss this at the August meetings. And I think we're just looking for a general indication of where the board's feeling is right now.
So Hunter, I would say that in a discussion that we had at business function, and thank you for coordinating that and getting Jamie from PFM to present to us. One of. Things that he had mentioned is that, you know. You would tip it on short term. Fix that have that. So when I look at the eleven projects here, and I'm going to use it, instead of, you know, short term, long term, I'm going to use a. Capital figure. So I'm going to say anything over a hundred thousand dollars. Nine of those eleven projects are over a hundred thousand dollars. And all of them are things that, you know, in effect, we have to do. And we've already done the turf redo, but. So. You know.
Hey, Mike, I'm, I'm having a lot of breakup with you right now.
We're losing you, Mike.
Yeah, he should probably turn off his background. So while Mike's getting himself together, are there any other comments? Relative to the topic of. Adding, adding to our debt. I'd just like to say that I participated in that business functions committee as well, and we had a lively discussion. And again, thanks Hunter for helping to facilitate that. You know, we do have some, you know, important decisions to make. And there are some things that need to happen before we get there, obviously. But we've, we've been delaying the development of a transportation center. And, and, and that is, that's certainly going to be an expense that I anticipate within the next two years, I hope. You know, there are, there are plans that are contingent upon approvals at the township level, level that will help, you know, decide the ultimate outcome and fate of this. But clearly this is going to be a, you know, a project that will represent probably one of the biggest costs of those, of that list. Probably somewhere in the range of between three and four million dollars, somewhere in that, in that ballpark. There's also been conversations about our, our administration building. And in the fact that right now we're using a. You know, an old elementary school that has been. You know, basically converted. You know, for the purposes of offices, but hasn't really been touched or changed with any substantial, in any substantial way since it's, since it was built. And it, and it is, and it's, it's really not an appropriate environment for an administration. Not only that, but it clearly is inefficient when it comes to energy use. We're heating and cooling a building that is designed for. At least five hundred students. And right now we have about twenty five to thirty staff members that occupy that building. So. You know, clearly we're not using that building appropriately, and it really, it would make so much sense to, to make some modifications in that building. And also try to use whatever is available space would be after consolidating some of the office space and trying to put it in a smaller section of the building. Trying to use that building creatively, maybe to be used by the community, or maybe even profitably by the school district to offer some space to, to companies and corporations that might need. You know, small office space in our area. So those are some major projects that I see that are in addition to this that would suggest to me that while money is. As inexpensive as we know that it is right now in terms of borrowing. Probably one among the lowest, you know, rates that we've seen in years that, as Mike will probably say when he gets back on. You know, that a lot of the smart, smart companies are really taking advantage of, of this economic climate to be able to kind of. Find ways to start to borrow and build, recognizing that this is a, a really kind of fantastic opportunity for us to save money in the long run. So my, my opinion on that and Hunter's question really is, I mean, how much are we comfortable with? You know, I'm comfortable. With, you know, the three point six or four point six, whatever's necessary. To incorporate the additions to those two additional projects that I think are so important.
Dave, can I ask a question? Sorry.
Sure.
I just wanted to confirm that us approving this right now is not approving those projects. It's just approving. Us borrowing the money, correct?
This is just a discussion. There's no action.
Oh, I thought we were going to go on something.
No, and this is just as an opportunity to kind of explore with the board some of the ideas that we had. With the business functions committee, you know, sharing those and kind of getting a sense from the rest of the board in terms of where you want to go. And maybe it would be important for you to see more information. More, more, more data. And hopefully, maybe at our workshop meeting, we can, we can dig down a little bit deeper into this and kind of show you more examples of. You know, how this would play out, you know, with the economics of. we can dig down a little bit deeper into this and kind of show you more examples of, you know, how this would play out, you know, with the economics of the district costs going forward. What does this mean, for instance, to our budget on an annual basis going forward? If we were to incur debt at a certain level? And what are some of the projects that we agree that we need to move forward on?
I have two questions. I'd like to know the impact on the taxpayer if we were to borrow the three point six. And I'd also like to know, what is the likelihood that we will spend that three point six in the allotted time? I guess the flip side of that question is what is the penalty if we don't spend it in the allotted time?
I can comment, but first, if you didn't have the opportunity to read the email I sent out around three thirty. Again, as Hunter said, bond counsel has advised us that make a list of those projects that you anticipate completing or eighty-five percent of it in three years. And that you have an estimated cost for it. And that's what you issue tax exempt bonds for, that's your amount. Do not put in additional funds for things that have a level of uncertainty or have, you don't have estimates at this point. Peter did mention, you know, there are taxable bonds, but Jamie Schlesinger weighed in on that and recommended, you know, at this juncture, he expects that the interest rates will remain low for a period of time and that as we forward with the transportation center, possibly administration or other projects, that there will be another leg of borrowing if needed to address those. As in terms of penalty for not spending, things happen. And, you know, that, we just basically document, you know, what will transpire. But the list that we have compiled, and I share, and it's attached to the agenda, you know, clearly, in the lion's share of that three point six is two million towards the junior high unit ventilators. And the Reifton roof, twenty years old, needs to be restored. Current cost of that is seven hundred and forty thousand, so they're definitely speaking with Rob Perzui. You know, we definitely have projects that we will utilize those funds.
Okay, that's good. I'd still, at some point, and maybe for the August meeting, I'd like to know if we borrow the three point six, what is that going to look like to the taxpayer?
Well.
Sorry, go ahead, Anne.
This will be part of the refinancing of the two thousand twelve issue. And I do have a spreadsheet and I can send that out to everyone. We shared it at business functions where the additional debt service, for example, on three point six million in two thousand twenty-one would be about fifty-one thousand. But the savings that we are going to achieve in the first year of the refinancing, estimated at two hundred and fifty-five thousand. So really will be two hundred and four thousand to the good in year one. But in the following years, it is paused, it's more level, almost break even. So I can share that again the next meeting. But so in other words, it won't cost the taxpayer additional funds in terms of mileage.
Well, I was just going to say quick too, that if, you know, and I don't mean to suggest that anybody should shorten what they're going to say this evening. But there is a tremendous level of detail that we explored and different nuances about this discussion at the business functions meeting. And if you're really not understanding this, I just encourage you to go watch that on YouTube and any member of the public to watch that on YouTube and review it. You know, there's just, there's a lot of different components to this and a lot of different options that I can just recall even listening to some of the questions that people are asking, that there was other parts of those questions that we had discussed and different things that people may not consider right now. So I just encourage everybody to go do that.
And so the other thing, will there be a list of these projects at the August meeting so we have it in front of us?
A list was provided to all the board members via email, and I'm guessing, Anne, that that can be put on the agenda again?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Hunter, is there any other, are there any other comments either from committee members or any questions from members of the board?
I've got plenty, but I'm just going to defer them until August because I don't want to prolong this conversation. But I think for everybody to have a really good understanding, you know, it would be a prudent decision to go review the business function meeting because I think there are a lot of different perspectives represented. And it also, I think, puts in perspective a how consequential this decision is. Because this will really have a domino effect on the funding that we appropriate out for all of our capital projects, probably for the next, I guess, nine years. So this is a really critical decision that I think everybody really needs to be invested in.
Anne, I would just like to ask you, when you think about the calculations of debt service, that we also sort of think about the impact if we were to try to fund the project through operations and we didn't have capital, that let's assume that the junior high unit ventilator replacement needed to occur and we didn't have capital and we needed to levy a one point nine million dollar expense just to our taxpayers to fix that because we didn't have the capital. I believe you told me that, what is a mill raise in Exeter?
One point three seven five million.
So if we were to just say to do the junior high roof and we're going to try and do that, and we didn't have the capital to go to, but had to raise the funds in the market, our market being taxpayers, we'd probably look at a one point five mil increase just to do that project outside of anything else that we would have to be working on.
Correct. That's what it would equate to.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Ernst, thanks very much. We're going to move on to personal committee. Mrs. Wilson, if you're available.
I'm here.
Oh, good.
I just wanted to remind you that we are going to table ten D change of status, if everybody's okay with that, so that the administration can review it, that decision. Okay, all right. First one, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following retirements of support staff.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following resignations extracurricular staff.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following appointments, certificated substitutes and extracurricular staff.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Oops, sorry.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following leave of absence.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve extended contracts for summer two thousand twenty for the following employee.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors appoint Don E. Harris, Director of Pupil Services, as Act Forty-four Coordinator of the Exeter Township School District effective July twenty-second, two thousand twenty.
Second.
Any discussion? I just want to say I want to thank Mr. Dean for filling in after Dr. Miller's resignation or retirement until Mrs. Harris, you know, could come here and did a really nice job. And we asked him to submit the annual end-of-year report. I thought he did a really great job with that, so I just wanted to recognize him for his contribution there.
I want to echo that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the attached list of course requests.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the following list of staff conferences.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries.
I don't know who's watching TV, but can you mute that, please?
Thanks, Mrs. Wilson.
Yep, that's it.
That's the end of your section. Mrs. Stratton's not available, but Dr. Haring is on the committee, and I've asked Dr. Haring to to present this portion of the agenda.
Thank you, Dave. Item eleven A is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the following resolution. Resolution number two thousand twenty dash oh-three, resolution declaring COVID-nineteen pandemic an emergency within the meaning of section five-two-zero-point-one of the Pennsylvania School Code by the Board of Directors of the Exeter Township School District. Whereas the World Health Organization has declared the current outbreak of COVID-nineteen a global pandemic. And whereas the Pennsylvania Department of Education has determined that the COVID-nineteen pandemic constitutes an emergency within the meaning of section five-two-zero-point-one of the Public School Code. And whereas the Board of School Directors has determined that the risk COVID-nineteen presents to our students, faculty, and community requires an extraordinary response. Now therefore, the Board finds and declares that the COVID-nineteen pandemic is an emergency within the meaning of section five-two-zero-point-one of the Pennsylvania School Code for the duration of said pandemic, but in no event for any period exceeding four years, the superintendent shall have the duty and the authority to develop a health and safety plan in a form and manner prescribed by the Pennsylvania Department of Education that ensures a minimum of a hundred and eighty days of instruction, allowing for a minimum of nine hundred hours of instruction at the elementary level and nine hundred and ninety hours of instruction at the secondary level, employing any combination of in-person, virtual, and distance learning as the superintendent deems appropriate to address the health and safety of students, faculty, and community and the learning needs of students. Such instruction shall comply in full with the requirement of chapter four of the Regulations of the State Board of Education and with the curriculum standards published in accordance therewith.
Second. Any discussion?
So Dave, this is the one where it doesn't explicitly state it, but this is the one that gives the superintendent the authority based on unique circumstances in the district to make a decision to shut down the school.
Yeah, I was going to suggest, Mike, that we allow Dr. Minor to just maybe kind of say a few things about why this is an important resolution for us to take.
Sure, I'd be happy to say a few words. So I did reference this, sorry, my air conditioner is now blowing on me. I did reference this in my presentation previously that this would allow the district and I as superintendent to determine that if conditions in our community became in such a state or as, you know, referenced in a previous question, if we were to run out of appropriate PPE supplies to keep our district sanitized, that we would close the schools for in-person instruction or go to some other model. Basically, it's an assurance, however, that whatever model, you know, I deemed appropriate in the emergency situation, it would fully comply with the requirements of a hundred and eighty days of instruction and continue to meet all of the requirements around standards and so forth. I think it's important to distinguish that it's not shutting down learning. It's closing school buildings if necessary or modifying the school schedules if necessary, but ensuring that learning continues through some methodology which may be exclusively virtual or a combination of some virtual or in-person as deemed necessary, given the circumstances. I think it's very important, a resolution for the board to approve in that, you know, the conditions around COVID-nineteen are changing rapidly and, you know, we may have to make some decision in a very short amount of time.
So it gives flexibility, but it also gives assurance that we'll continue to comply with the chapter four requirements and the standards relative to a hundred and eighty days and the number of hours of instruction at elementary and secondary. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries.
Item eleven B, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the phased school opening health and safety plan for submission to the Pennsylvania Department of Education.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Any abstention? We have one opposed. Motion carries.
Item eleven C, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the emergency instructional time schedule for submission to the Pennsylvania Department of Education as required by section five-two-zero-point-one of the Pennsylvania School Code.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Want to pose? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Item eleven.
Excuse me, one second. Can I just clarify that there was a second on eleven A? I didn't hear it. I just wanted to make sure that it happened.
I'm not sure who recorded it.
Yeah, it was John.
Thank you. I just missed it. My apologies.
Item eleven D, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves a memorandum of understanding with the Exeter Township Education Association.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just want to say quickly that this, I think, means a lot to the district. And, you know, without getting into too much detail, I just want to say thank you to the association for their willingness to work with the district through this extremely challenging subject. I know that there was some disagreement, but ultimately, they were able to work with us and, you know, this is... I don't know why I'm getting emotional about this, but this is a big deal. So I just want to say thank you to our want to say thank you to our association and our teachers for their commitment to making sure that this year happens.
I'd like to just follow up on that and say that it's truly been a pleasure to work with the leadership of the association on this MOU and in all aspects of the pandemic planning. I'm just so impressed by their commitment to our students and our school and their willingness to work collaboratively, and we've had to do a lot of things in a very short period of time. And again, my sincerest appreciation to the association as a whole and the leadership.
I think their support is also a foreshadowing of which we pretty much believe is going to happen anyway.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries.
Item 11E, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the Legal Services Consultation Agreement between Sweet Stevens Katz and Williams and the Exeter Township School District for the 2021 school year at a cost of $12,500.
Second.
Any discussion?
So I did have a question on that. We had approved a motion earlier this year to agree to a dollar per hour figure. Is this around a particular issue, or is this related to COVID, or?
Mrs. Harris, do you want to speak to this from Mr. Chapina, please?
Yeah, so what, I'm not sure what was approved earlier this year, but I'll take a guess at it, not having been here. Typically, when you're working with your solicitor for particularly special education agreements and consultation, you'll receive two different things. One of them is what you probably received earlier in the year, which is a dollar amount for specific billing for specific cases that we would discuss with our solicitor, and any specific case-related work that they do. This agreement is a broader agreement that covers a more proactive approach to handling issues related to special education regulations and law, Chapter 15 agreements, pupil services, questions and issues. And really, this agreement gives administrators in the district the opportunity to ask questions at no dollar per hour cost. It's a bulk cost. And in addition to that, it provides the district with a certain number of training days, and I believe the option for Exeter, if I'm correct, is six training days. Most of the districts in Berks County have a legal agreement like this in place in order to be a little bit more proactive in terms of education of staff, working with administrators, and that collaborative piece of working on special education issues and Chapter 15 issues.
Yeah, I think too, I'm sorry, go on, Mike.
Just to go back, I mean, if I recall, what we approved previously was just a dollar an hour rate, not specific to any particular project or issue. Does anybody recall that?
I thought that there were two hourly rates. One was for regular matters, and then one was for special matters that needed additional research and time.
Okay.
But that was my recollection.
No, I think, I think you, I think you are right, but they were non-specific. They weren't, they were just sort of an ad hoc pricing.
Yeah. Well, I know, I know the township that I work for has a similar agreement to this, where if a question can be answered within 15 minutes as a part of our association with a state organization, that the attorneys will stay on the phone with us for up to 15 minutes for that annual fee, and then pass that, you know, there's a billable hour. So I don't know, Dawn, if you can speak to if there's any type of time constraint along with that.
Yeah, there's no time constraint, and, you know, if we're efficient about it, we use it liberally in a proactive way to ask questions, to, you know, enhance our programming and, you know, sort of address issues before they become bigger issues.
So other than Thomas Warner and Andrew Faust are such other members, so this doesn't apply to anybody at Sweet Stevens. It just applies to those two who are other such other members.
Dave, can I comment?
Yeah, please do.
So, Mike, my suspicion is, though I didn't recall precisely, I suspect what you approved last month, or whenever you were mentioning, was our appointment at Solicitor for the upcoming year, and that fee letter typically has two hourly rates, you know, one for adversarial type of situations and a lower hourly rate for the usual Solicitor-type general questions, attendance at the board meetings, things of that nature. In addition, we have what's identified in this agreement as our pool council. And what the pool council, and this pool council, it's a special education matter. And what the pool council does is it sets a flat fee for a variety of activities during the course of the year. For the fee, you get six full day-to-day consultations. Typically, in this instance, it would be with Andy Faust or Tom Warner, both of whom are within our special ed department. And it also allows you access to some general questions responded to, and also access to our library, our pool council library. What these folks do is when they get information or questions asked that are of a general nature, not of a specific nature to a school district, they will post their general responses in the library that we have. And if you're a subscriber to the pool council, the district will have access to all of those opinion letters as they get published. So that's what this is. This is in addition to our normal Solicitor work for you, is the pool council for special education matters.
And I can say too, I mean, just in responding to the necessity of something like this, I've worked with these, with these agreements and used pool council for probably 15 years as a Director of Pupil Services, and I'll have to say, you know, it's invaluable. I mean, it's kind of hard to calculate the number of hours in the course of a year where you can pick up the phone and contact an attorney and get some direction and save the district literally hundreds of thousands of dollars in potential litigation, you know, just by making sure you have the right answer and right direction relative to a particular legal issue. Usually, it's special education, but there are tons of pupil services matters that go well beyond that. Issues with nursing and school health, student registration, you know, all the extraordinary programs, alternative education, ESL. It just goes on and on. So it's just not limited to special education. There's a whole broad range of pupil services where the law is complicated, and it's just so, it's so valuable to have that opportunity to pick up the phone and also take advantage of, as what Ellis mentioned, you know, some of their, you know, already established opinions that, you know, exist where they give you a very comprehensive document that really lays out in its entirety a rationale for a particular action that this district needs to take. So I would support this 100%. I think it's, it's a way to save the district money, actually. Are there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries.
Item 11F, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves an extended school year tuition agreement between Deveraux and the Exeter Township School District for one student for a period July 6, 2020 through July 29, 2020, at a total cost of $7,654.50.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The motion carries.
Item 11G, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves extended school year tuition agreements between Hogan Learning Academy and the Exeter Township School District for two students for a period July 6, 2020 through August 7, 2020, for a total of $21,000.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries.
Item 11H, one, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve tuition agreement between New Story Perkyomen Avenue and the Exeter Township School District to provide special education services for two students for the 2021 school year at a total cost of $108, I'm sorry, $108,836. Item number two, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve tuition agreements between New Story New Holland Road and Exeter Township School District to provide special education services for one student, 2021 school year, at a total course of $68,400.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries.
11I, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the following settlement agreement for student number 6872021 to pay $30,500, and for student 6882021 to pay $19,000 assigned to an educational fund for legitimate educational expenses as defined by the agreement in a form acceptable to the Solicitor, and to settle all claims raised by the student and parent, and authorize the Board President and Secretary to execute that settlement agreement and release on behalf of the district.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries.
Item 11J, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves early graduation January 2021 for four students per District Policy Number 217AR-2.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thanks, Dr. Herring. Nice job. We're going to move into the Athletic Committee and Committee Reports, and we'll start off with Mr. Chapina.
Yeah, so Dave, I see Mrs. Selke here, so I'm gonna let her talk through that plan. But before I do, I just want to mention that I've got a kind of a disturbing email from somebody while we've been on this phone call, who claims that their name and address were misappropriated by somebody to ask a question. So she is quite upset at that occurring. And I'm not going to, you know, mention this again, but we need to look into it because it was a fairly negative question. It was actually wrong in its content, and, you know, we have now sort of, you know, in effect, put somebody in a very awkward position as raising an issue that they had nothing to do with. So perhaps we can have some discussion at that at some point, but I felt like I needed to mention that since the email just came to me.
Thanks, Mike. Yeah, that's, doesn't seem quite right. So we need to get to the bottom of that one.
Yeah.
Thanks for bringing that up.
Yep. Mrs. Selke, I know that you have patiently sat for three hours and 35 minutes. Now you know what it feels like to be a school board member. So I know that you guys have been working diligently and hard and have a great desire to get back on the field, and you have a great group of parents that you're working with and great members of the, you know, who work with you to, you know, raise one of the shining stars of Exeter or marching bands. So I'm going to let you talk about this, and I'll support you anywhere I can, as will anybody else.
So I apologize. Thank you for having me here tonight. I wasn't exactly sure what I was supposed to do tonight. I didn't know if I was going to be answering questions or if I need to present this in whole, if you had a chance to review it. I think, I mean, it was brought to our attention earlier that there was one typo or two typos in here about the number of permitted gathering numbers from 25 to 250. So I just want to point that out. But basically, kind of following up with the guidance that has been provided by, you know, the athletic plan, I've been, I used Mr. Legass's plan. I used a plan from the National Federation of State High School Association guidelines. I've been following the Cavalcade of Bands, which is a local chapter of directors in this area to come up with the best possible scenarios for student musicians to come back to safely perform. We will be practicing all the social distancing guidelines that Dr. Minor has presented in her reopening plan, and, oh, I can't scroll through that. I'm trying to scroll. And we have specific procedures in place for instrument cleaning, for student drop-off, for zoning students in specific rehearsal locations to minimize social contact with one another until we are prepared to go onto the field. And with all of this, these are all voluntary rehearsals, so students have the option, if they do not feel safe and do not want to attend, they do not have to do so. And I have provided like a video, an educational video. They have to sign the waiver. We'll be doing the health screenings. It's all very similar to what athletics has been doing already, and we just have a couple more things in place just because we have obviously wind instruments in our hands, we have flags. But at no time, we are saying that students are going to be in contact, like physical contact with each other. We will be doing our social distancing on the field because that's what marching bands do. We like to keep formations nice and tight, and like, we're going to be spread out on the field to present ourselves that way. Face coverings will be mandatory, as we've said, in terms of students that are at six feet apart, they should be wearing face coverings. And we're also looking into using bell coverings to add added protection onto the instruments themselves. We had a study done by the National Federation of State High Schools. They did an aerosol study of the aerosols coming from the mouth and outside of a bell. A lot of that moisture is actually trapped in the instrument, but any moisture that would come through the bell, very minimal, we would have a, we are looking into purchasing barriers for those bells, and we're also looking into purchasing uniform face masks for the band, and they are also recommending that face masks with little slits in them can be used for performance purposes. So there are a lot of unique ways that when musicians can safely perform outside and still be able to do so going into the school year. I've outlined that we are not having any volunteers working with us, so we are not asking for parents or for outside clinicians to work with us this year, unfortunately, but that is for the safety and health of our students, and no meals will be served on campus, as we've done in the past. So students will be in charge of bringing their own meals, their own water for the duration of the rehearsals. Under rehearsal considerations, again, I've mapped out, I surveyed all the parking lots, the fields that we have. We have a lot of space for rehearsal, and we're getting all these tents donated to us to use during these practices so that students can perform outside in all weather conditions. In the event of inclement weather, we do have a plan to go indoors, but to... We do have a plan to go indoors, but to, to follow the guidelines that have been provided. So if we are having to go inside because of thunder and lightning, we will have no more than 25 students and staff in the band room or in the choir room or in the orchestra room. And we will designate exit points and entry points and everything will be mapped out for students and parents to view. And students, we are asking them to transport their instruments to and from practice so that we don't have, so that they are taking them home and cleaning them. We are asking them to clean them according to the, the NFHS guidelines, the NAFME guidelines on instrument cleaning. I've detailed that in an educational video to the students already on how to do that and where to find that information. And I don't know exactly how much you want me to say about this, but we, we take this very seriously and we are looking forward to having the students return. And I'd be more than happy to answer any specific questions if there are any.
Mrs. Selkey, this is Ann Haring. I wanted to thank you for the informational video that you gave to the kids. It was great and it was thorough. One quick question regarding the uniforms. Have you put much thought yet into the freshmen needing uniforms for this year?
That's a great question. Some of the guidance that I've had from other band directors, speaking to other band directors in the area, is that we will, we are going to probably stick to an alternate uniform be, just because we don't have the capabilities to size and measure students, because as I said, we're not allowed to use volunteers at this point in time. So in my handbook, I've, we've been using an alternate uniform where we've had a polo and uniform pants in the past. And I believe that moving forward, we could go with that where the student would be providing that for themselves and we would order the shirts for the students. But that is only until we're able to have uniform sizing available, which I, I'm told, I've been advised that we will just wait and hold off on that until it's safe to do so.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any other questions?
No. Well, thanks, Mrs. Selkey. I, I'm assuming, Mr. Tropina, you have a motion then that we need to consider?
Yep, it's recommended the board of school directors approves the marching band restarting guide to start rehearsals for the 2021 school year.
Second.
Can you give it to John?
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. Thank you, Mrs. Selkey.
Thank you for your time.
Have a nice night. So we'll move on to business functions committee, Mr. Ehrens.
In the interest of brevity, I'll send out notices to the board members and they will also be shared publicly in preparation for our next business functions meeting, which will occur in August.
Thanks, Mr. Ehrens. Curriculum committee, Dr. McLendon.
It is recommended that the board of school directors approves the donation of $250 from the Women's Club of Exeter Township for the purchase of books for incoming kindergarten students.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. Thank you.
There is no report on curriculum committee meeting because we did not meet for the month of July.
Thanks, Mrs., Dr. McLendon. Mr. Fidler, facilities committee.
We did not have a meeting, so no report tonight.
Thank you. Personal committee, Mrs. Wilson.
I do not have anything to report tonight.
Thank you. Policy committee, Dr. Hamburger, no report. Student functions committee, I'll turn that over to Dr. Haring if you have anything.
There's nothing, there's nothing to report.
Thanks, Dr. Haring. Technology committee, Mr. Miller.
Nothing to report.
Thank you, sir. Exeter Community Education Foundation, Dr. Haring.
ECEF just received notification that we were awarded $4,430 from AXAXL, a global insurance and compliance organization for the green initiative of water bottle fillers for K through six. This grant will cover three water bottle, bottle fillers and portion of a fourth or for plumbing costs towards three stations, one of each of Exeter's elementary schools. We thank the Exeter parent that notified us of this grant and are proud to invest in our buildings and students. The next meeting will be Wednesday, August 5th at 6:30. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Haring. BCTC joint operating committee, Dr. McLendon.
The, the board approved the, we met on June 24th. It was a hybrid in person and Zoom. And the board approved the thing anti racism resolution that we also approved this evening. And their action plan is to provide professional development for staff to form a racism equity and diversity committee to post signage in their buildings and they're going to use their programs like the printing and the graphics for the students to design and to make these signs and to post messages on social media. They, the welding building that they, they were working on this year is going to be available for students at the start of the school year. They decided to use the former welding building. They have adult continuing ed students who are in the welding program and they're going to now have some daytime adult students and they're going to use the old welding building. And, and just to remind you that that is one of their programs that generates revenue. They applied to the state for apprenticeship program that would come with a lot of advantages for the school. The seniors who graduated but did not complete their certifications are going to be permitted to do that in the evening or in daytime to complete the certifications. At a total of 217 students who were missing, had some incomplete certifications. And they spent a lot of time in the meeting talking about some of the same things we talked about with the health and safety plan. However, because they need to coordinate this with all the 16 sending schools, they are not able to make a, you know, to get a finalizer plan for PDA until that happens. So we normally meet the fourth Wednesday of every month and the meeting was moved up to August 5th so that they can get the information from the 16 sending schools about their plan and try to, you know, collaborate their plan with the 16 sending schools. So that's, that's the end of my report.
Thanks, Dr. McLendon.
You're welcome.
BCIU board of directors, no report, there was no meeting held by BCIU in July. Legislative liaison, Mr. Fidler.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Township Borough liaison, Mr. Tropina.
Just a quick update, I'd like to thank Mr. Ehrens and you, Dave, for some of the interactions that you've had with the township leadership and the new township borough or new township manager and also Hunter's suggestion that we look to get Dr. Minor and the new township manager together just to, you know, meet each other and figure out that there's going to be some links between us in the ensuing years. That's it.
Great, thank you. Thanks, Mike. Before we adjourn, are there any board members who would request to be heard at this time?
Yeah, I, I, Dave, I'd just like to come back to this issue because I've gotten another email from this person and, you know, they're pretty upset. So, so question number four that was originally asked during that questioning period that was attributed to a person named T. Nurney. They've communicated to me through several emails right now that that question was not submitted by them. And, you know, they don't want to be identified with that question and/or the content of the question, which was not only, you know, somewhat hostile, but actually was incorrect. So I, I think we should probably get to the bottom of this, but, you know, the, the question regarding a football player playing baseball, that was completely wrong. There were five players not allowed to play because they were at football. There was one football player who did play, but he wasn't at practice because he had been previously quarantined. So, you know, I'd like us to at some point go back, look at question four and see if there's any way that forensically, from an IT perspective, we could find out how that question was submitted and how it was attributed to a person who did not submit that question.
May I ask something else? Ellis, is that, can we redact that or retract that from our minutes because it was done under false pretense? Ellis?
Frozen.
I think that's a good idea, actually. Kim?
Everyone was frozen, so I didn't hear the question.
I, I, Ellis, I asked if we could retract that or redact it from our minutes if it was done under false pretense.
Sure. Yes.
And I'd like to ask that, please be done.
I, I would agree with that. I don't know whether we need to take a vote on that, but I think everybody would pretty much agree that that's, is there any disagreement? Maybe I'll phrase it that way. Does anyone disagree with the idea of removing that, which is clearly the alleged author is claiming that this, this would, did not come from that source? And, and we'll, and I agree, we, I think we need to have a conversation at some point, maybe at a later date with, with our IT.
I'll, I'll work with Mr. Way on getting to the bottom of what happened in that situation.
Okay, great, thank you. And, and, and maybe if there's any way that we can, in the future, kind of authenticate communications, because that, it wouldn't be the first time that school districts were, you know, kind of the victim of, you know, somebody who was using the internet and the anonymity it affords to, to, to promote false information.
Come back to the board with a, you know, with a proposal about how to improve in that area prior to the August 5th meeting.
Okay.
Just a, just a thought from someone who is not an expert in IT, but I, I've been doing two-way authentication with different things that I do, bank transactions, credit cards. Just wondering if there's a way to have a two-way authentication so when somebody submits something, there's a way to back that up. I, for example, get a code sent to my tech and I enter that code and then I can proceed with the, it might be cumbersome, but it might also prevent something like this from happening.
Yeah.
John, the other thing that I would consider, and you did this as a, as an editorial writer for the Redding Eagle, is that they have a fairly stringent process in confirming people who submit letters to the editor. So it might be that something like this in effect requires people to submit questions ahead of time where their identification is confirmed through a phone call or some way to connect back with them. Now that takes away some of the spontaneity of what we like to have with give and take with people, but if that's what it takes, I'd rather lose some of the spontaneity and maintain the integrity of our questions.
Absolutely.
I, I'd like to work with Mr. Way and our council on, you know, making sure that we're maintaining, you know, provisions around sunshine and the ability of the public to comment without restricting that and still tightening up and making sure that when people are attributed to a comment, that it is in fact that. So again, we'll, we'll work with both Mr. Way and council and come up with a proposal for the board.
And I would just ask that the school board make a formal apology to this family through a written letter.
We can do that. Any other comments from board members? Who may want to be heard this time?
I, I really quickly just want to say thank you to our administration and our faculty and staff. There's been a tremendous amount of work that's been happening on many different issues, chief among them, the pandemic. And it's done amidst the backdrop of, you know, a world changing event that has no near historical precedent. So I think it's just noteworthy and, and important to say thank you for the work that you guys are doing.
On behalf of the administrative team, I, I thank you for the acknowledgement.
Thank you, Hunter. Any other comments? Okay, at this time I'll accept a, a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Bye. All right, I think we're, I think we're, I think we're, I think we're wrapped up for the evening, so thanks, everybody. Have a nice night and we'll see you soon, I'm sure.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Be safe.
Good night.
Hunter, thanks for the comments.